Trustee Baker?
Here.
Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Trustee Goff? Okay, absent for the moment. Trustee Baldini is absent. Trustee Rios?
Here.
And student trustee Leon, I don't see him here. And trustee Segura?
Here.
Trustee Iverson?
Here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And pledge of allegiance. Fay, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America, where we are the quickest and strongest nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. 2.3, adoption of the agenda. I am going to pull 12.2. This is the agreement with the county of Napa on the emergency shelter. So with 12.2 pulled, are there any other objections?
I think the only other piece is the part of closed session has been truncated. So I'd probably like to spend a little more time in this session and do closed session for like half an hour. So we're in no hurry for this first hour, I guess would be the only. It doesn't affect public or anything else, just mostly housekeeping for us.
Everybody good? Option on the agenda. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Kraft. This is our board self-evaluation, 3.1.
Okay, well, I'll switch to the other mic. This is a self-evaluation session that we've got scheduled. Originally, I think we looked for an hour or so, but I think we picked up a little more time and some of the items in closed session are truncated. So we're not in too much of a hurry. But let's just, at the latest, I think we can go to 5:30 or so. And I'll go over the agenda with you in just a moment. This is a kind of a biannual policy review, according to your policy, really. The board takes a look and does a board evaluation, you know, both annually in terms of its schedule, kind of maintenance sometimes, but biannually to take a look at its goals and reset those. This is a part of best practice, good governance, and also it finds its way in accreditation standards as well. So tonight, in some ways, we'll address some of the standard four governance pieces for our next accreditation visit. Your participation in tonight, this is really a conversation. That's why it's really called a, it's a workshop. And it's a training opportunity as well. And this is kind of how we've broken it up, part one, part two, part three. 20 to 30 on reviewing the survey results. There's a survey that the board took, self-analysis and forwarded over. Well, we'll take a look on that survey of results and kind of how you're doing, identify if we can, the strengths and challenges that you had. Really is not about trying to address with this board critical issues that would be antithetical to some of the things in accreditation. This board is a highly, it's a good functioning board. You assume your jobs in a way, I think, and conduct yourselves in a way that is, you know, both important and mission-driven, but I think recognize your greater response to the community. And I think most people see that. It's not true of all boards in California. Some boards are in disarray. Some boards are brand-new. Our board has the luxury of at least having three members with some good history and a couple of members of kind of middlestream and a couple new members. So that brings some diversity to their perspectives, which is good. You'll see some of that diversity come out in the survey results, which sometimes can be a little head-scratching when you look at them and think, huh, you know, I wonder why on this question the board felt this way and on this question they felt this way. And that's part of what we want to tease out. Second part, 20 to 30 minutes is review our board goals and outcomes from last year. The outcomes really are your qualitative reflections on what you feel and how you think you did. And we'll take a look at those as well. And then part three is to either sketch out some themes. We'll try to catch your themes on this board as we're working through the entire part one, two, and three. Sketch out some themes that might work for you. So if the word communication or outward visibility or those things kind of crop up or, you know, NVC is a hub or communicate more, we'll capture these. Hopefully, then we would be able to craft those in with staff or the board chair or through a subcommittee, if you'd like, to work on goals. Any of those things can happen. August, I think, would be a good time for you to adopt those at your regular August meeting. It's possible to go later, but my suggestion is you don't delay too far down the line and you play catch-up, which we have done before. So questions on that? It's an open conversation between you all and you should, it's not a guided, it's just simply I'm here as a facilitator to keep the conversation going. But this is a conversation between the board that is viewed by the public. And staff are here to help ask questions, answer questions, you know, give you prompts, and we'll just see where it goes, if that's okay. We do it in public because that's the way it should be. So some 19 findings. You have a couple of things on your desks, I think.
No, we haven't passed them out yet. So.
Yes. Catherine is going to pass out a Board of Trustees Evaluation Survey Results, 219, that we'll refer to as we go through. Basically, it's all the questions you all answered, numbers one through 37, and then kind of the rubrics as we went through. The strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree, or you skipped that question. And it kind of gives an overview for you. I think that we also have a PDF that we can show as we're moving through this. From a high end, before you dive into this, I know it's dangerous to pass that out, but before you dive into it, high end, take a look at your screen for a moment. You know, what we need to work on, and we'll go through these in much more detail, but seem to be the board's vision. You have a vision statement that you adopted in 17. You spent quite a long time with a consultant, working up Valley, for those of you who are on the board. We worked through a whole series of issues, including, you know, kind of board governance, board relations, board policies. And then the last part of that all-day retreat was crafting a vision statement. There's still some confusion, I think, on vision. Is this, is this the college vision, your vision as a board for yourself or a broader community vision? And we can kind of get to that. That's a good one. Community engagement also emerged as an area where you felt you needed to work on. And I'm not sure what that means, so we'll have to get there. Educational authority. Is this board viewed by the outward-facing stakeholders in the community as a higher education authority? And there was some diversity there. So again, we're, you know, you're really looking with a small n here. So there's seven responses. Sometimes people laid out. So one person can make a real difference in these responses. So we looked for responses that would, if all the board agreed, it's pretty solid, you know, this, we can either address that as a strength, you know, potentially, but chances are we don't need to work on that piece. I'll come back to these again. This is just an overview. What we do well was some other pieces. Oh, this is not going to work. I think it's a, I think it's a repeat. It's the, the, some of the pieces that we, we, wait a minute, let me see. What we need to work on, board's vision, what we do well, these are, forget the highlights.
I think I missed.
Right? I think these are opposite. You felt like you were doing pretty good in planning fiduciary financial pieces. You had a pretty good, hi Beth. Welcome.
I apologize.
Oh, no, no problem. We just, we just started. And we'll note that Veth Goff is here, please, for the agenda. And I think you felt that you had a pretty good grip on institutional effectiveness. We cover a lot and it's very difficult in a few hours a year, right? Aggregate, what, you're looking at 36 hours, you know, at the most generally to, you know, kind of come into this situation where you're really diving in here. Call it another 36 on top of that, maybe for study of materials, and you kind of get there. If you're really a highly engaged member, call it another 36 or 40 or 50 or maybe even 100 hours, then you start to pick up some expertise by attending CCLC or spending more time and energy. So it differs. Your responses differ. Thank you, trustee Goff, for providing a really wonderful roll-up, which we passed out and that we can go through. What I thought I would do, and this is up to you, but we have a couple pieces here. The roll-up that you have in front of you, we can go through those. I felt that you wouldn't want to go through every single question because we would eat up the most, the better part of an hour. But we really looked at those four or five questions where the board had a difference or a diversity piece. So this one, for example, the board has clear goals and actions resulting from relevant and realistic strategic planning. No one strongly agreed here. So that's telling us something, you know? We've got to be clear on what that is. Most of you agreed with that? Some, a couple of people disagreed? And nobody strongly disagreed? So, you know, when we, when we, this may be about communication, too, about where you think you need to look or find materials. So I'm wondering if there is something that, and we're just going to explore these as we go. So this may be a little step out for you in some ways, but the board, this is referring to you as a board, right? Not the college or the president's schools, but the board's schools. And I'm, I think that's how most of you addressed it. Or you could have had a semantic piece here and seen it as the board has clear goals and actions resulting from relevant and realistic strategic planning of the college that, you know, so I'm not quite sure how you wanted to get at this. But for those of you, there may be some items that you just want to talk about here. How do you feel generally about the strategic planning that's happening at the college? That's, that's a kind of a general question that we could work through. You're not, you're not commenting on staff's effort or, you know, my leadership or, you can comment on Oscar's leadership, I think that's fine. But, but you're really not doing those things in a way that's, that's, there's nothing pejorative here. We're just trying to bring you up to a place where you can effectively represent the community. So that is the question here. So is everybody familiar with the strategic plan goals of the college?
I think that the part of the problem with.
Turn that on. Or maybe.
I think part of the problem with this question.
Yeah.
Is since, and I don't know if other people, if this would have gone into how people answered it, but I don't honestly remember what I said. But the, so we're talking about the board's goals, but the college's strategic plan, correct?
Yes. Because you really don't, this board does not have a strategic plan, you have goals. So, but this isn't about the plan, this is, we can only do this in higher ed, right? This is planning. So this is more about a process. So you, the way that I interpret this and some people, your goals that you work on, including the ones that you're going to work on tonight and next week, derive, come from your understanding of all the planning processes that kind of go on, all the spinning plates that you see that kind of make sense to you. Because the reality is that there's very few plans in the college that aren't either under review or being worked on. It's a constant fluid piece, right? We do have some things that are put to bed. The FMP, the Facilities Master Plan, the Educational Master Plan, both open for review. There's a college utilization study that's kind of out there that you know about, but what's that done? Technology plan was finished, but now it's under review. Financial plan was finished and we did budgets, but now we're doing a five-year financial forecast. So there's a lot kind of moving as you go. So I guess the answer to your question is, do you need, what do you need? What can, what do you need as a board that we may be able to bring to you that would make your establishment of your own goals? How best to move the dial for this college district? What is it that you should be saying, right? That's, that's really what we're talking about here.
Well, I, you know, I understood the question here, but I kind of felt that, I was thinking, when we're all sitting here, does everybody really know what those goals are? And I was thinking that we probably don't, that maybe we don't actually look at those often enough to help guide what we're doing here. And when we, we ask for certain things, you know, to be on the agenda or to be studied or whatever, we're not really, I don't feel like we're looking at those goals and saying, how's this helping us advance, you know, towards those goals? So I think most of the times we don't even remember what those goals are because we haven't looked at them enough and we don't, we probably should do it more often.
Maybe we could have them on one of these little doodads.
We could. I think that's a good suggestion. I mean, having those goals posted or in front of you. At other districts that I have led or been a part of, those, where you can, those agenda items that make sense are tied to a goal. This agenda item supports goal three, the seamless enhancement of something. Where, where you have to be careful is, you want to make sure that, that this is authentic and that a goal at the bottom of some action really represents something and you're just not gaming the system because, you know, advance the success of students. We could, there's almost nothing that we would pass here that doesn't, doesn't support that. So we want to make sure that they were honest and authentic. And, and as a board member, you may want to question that, you know? I'm not sure that I have heard that question or feel that way, to say, you know, I'm ready to vote yes, however, you know? How does this support our, the goals of the institution? That's a great question, right?
Well, I think it's something we should always have in mind.
Yeah.
When we were considering the actions we take.
So some logistic things that we can do, like Jennifer's example of, you know, putting it out in front, kind of front and center, and maybe tying it to, we can see how difficult it might be in board docs. We've had this conversation already and I think it could happen. Holly, the person behind the curtain over there, you know, is working also with me on some of these, some of these questions really get to communication and visibility. And so we can also, you can engage us all in this conversation. Staff, by the way, you know, Fay and, and Oscar and Bob, you know, weigh in, you know, if and when you feel like you can add value here, please. So others on this, we can come back to this, but this was one that we started looking at, right?
Oh, I think, the only thing, other thing that I would add, and I'm not really sure it has to do with, maybe just when we're thinking about how to write a new goal or whatever, when I think of strategic planning and goals and all that, I think of it being very cyclical. And it's like you don't just have a goal and a plan or a plan and a goal. They feed on each other and you're constantly moving it forward and evaluating and then adjusting as needed. So I'd like to see something, because like the way this, the way this is written, it's like the goals are a result from the realistic strategic plan. Well, you could technically say that this, you could flip that even. You could say the strategic plan comes from clear goals. So I would, I think that maybe finesse it a little bit better so that you can see the, how they play off of each other.
Totally agree.
Good. I mean, and we've, we've talked a little bit about this and I have separately with you and we have in one-on-ones and with, and Bob has certainly made the point as well, too. I mean, budget, you know, following your checkbook, you know, the questions and where you decide to put money at the, it comes, it bubbles up from the bottom and then you approve, but it's certainly no rubber stamp either. I mean, you have fiduciary responsibility to guide those dollars where you believe in kind of, you know, accord with the college and my leadership and the shared governance process, those dollars need to be, all right? So there are, there are pools of money that we do our best with that are identified. And those pools of money go, generally speaking, to those areas that are approved through the budget process and roll their way up and then you approve that budget. But I think it's certainly appropriate, not at the micro level, right? But certainly appropriate to have conversations about, you know, about transfer, about preparation of ADTs, you know, associate degree transfers, or a conversation about career and technical. What is the balance between those two things in your mind? And does community education, you know, in non-credit and community fee-based, how does that fit for you all? I mean, you're the pipeline to the community, so you're supposed to be reflecting that. I spoke with a CEO today who said, we don't care at all about career and technical. 10% of our budget goes there. 90% goes into transfer. That's who we are, that's who we want to be. I'm like, well, you know, yeah, that, you know, we have a very strong career and technical orientation here because of our local community tie, right? So, so those kinds of things would be open for you to kind of invest in. Let me move along to the, to another one. The board effectively represents NVC to the community. Some disagreement here. Again, no strongly agree. So I think what I land on here is not beating the board up, but I think you're trying to figure out what effectively means, right? I mean, you, you do represent. Everybody knows, right? They look, you know, how, what are we trying to get at here? What's effectively mean? And it can be a whole series of things from a board goal in representation of the community could revolve around your active, the board will actively engage in monthly presentations. Each board member will actively engage in monthly presentations to community members. All right, that's, that's good. I mean, you know, as far as a goal, it's high-level, it's not getting into the weeds, it's something that you all may want to do. I'm not suggesting that is a goal, but I'm just giving you an example of how you might have gone at this. So I'm not quite sure what this means, but, and it's also mean, may mean, and I took it this way, too, and I had this conversation with Holly. You know, we've gone through a transition, as you know, with PIO and materials and our website and those things. It may be that you want or could use more visibility in terms of your web presence, more information or handouts that would be good for you to take forward in the community, that snapshot kind of ideas that you would present to your friends, neighbors, and small groups, that makes sense. What is it that you, if you got invited, it's a good question for you. If you got invited to a small group next week to speak, we'll make it a small, nonpartisan group of 12, it's a reading club that really wants to know more about the college. Do you know what you say, right? And so, and that may be here, right? I mean, you could land on a lot of stuff, right? But what is it that you say? So I'm just throwing stuff out there until I get some, some response.
Some of the, what you were just saying is what crossed my mind when I was looking at this. I don't think we have very good visibility. I think that very few people really know who the board is, you know, or that, you know, we're an elected board. It was funny, I was sitting at, I was in Calistoga for the Fourth of July parade and standing, you know, on the sidewalk as the, I think it was a trolley car went by with all the Napa County elected, you know, electeds. And I was thinking, well, we're elected. And, but that happens often where I'm somewhere and I'll tell somebody that I'm a trustee and they go, oh, a trustee at the college. And they're like surprised. So, and I'm not one that, that's probably why I'm not, wouldn't make a good politician, but I'm not one always, you know, kind of seeking, you know, exposure or anything. But I think that we really do lack that, some, we need some kind of exposure to let people know who we are and that, you know, the college actually has an elected board. And this goes to, I think, some of, a couple of the other questions that are on here about, you know, our visibility, but beyond that, you know? But that's kind of what I was feeling and thinking, well, nobody knows who we are. How are they, you know, supposed to, one, know that we're kind of the authority on higher education or, you know, the district? And all of these things kind of get mixed in together. But primarily, what was crossing my mind when I was standing there watching all the electeds, you know, go by, was that nobody knows who we are.
So I had the opposite experience in American Canyon where I was watching our parade and people going by saying, you should be in this. You need to, and I'm like, oh, I didn't even think about it.
But you have a different, I guess, level of, I'd say notoriety. Not in a bad way. And not in a bad way, but, you know, in a good way.
How do you make that sound good? I don't know. You can make that sound good, but it's true. It's a small town and I'm involved in all sorts of different things. And I've been in the parade before under different guises, but specifically people said to me, you need to be in here to help educate everybody about the college. And I, you know, we were out of school June 6th, but I had a full calendar month in June. And doing just what you were suggesting, you know, I was invited to different groups to talk about all sorts of things, depending upon what the group was. And it's been really interesting. The other night I was at a meeting and I introduced myself to somebody and they go, oh, I know who you are. I'm like, oh, crap. So, you know, it's scary when they say that because. Especially with that tone. How do you know? I know. How do you know? So, but it's all really positive, really, really positive so far. So I think it is true. I think we just need to make more of a concerted effort, maybe be more visible. I'm not a politician either and it's very intimidating for me to put myself out there, but my husband keeps saying, remember, it's not you, it's trustee. You're a trustee and you have to think of it in those terms that you're not putting yourself out there, you're putting the trustee of Napa Valley College out there. So it might be interesting to maybe have a discussion and really figure out how we can promote what we do here because I think that will encourage people to come and really participate.
I was at, I was at a community or a town hall meeting in St. Helena once and I was introduced as a college trustee. And a member of the Rotary Club came up to me and, you know, she said, so you're a trustee? And I said, yes. And she did say, you know, well, we hope you become more visible because when Joanne was a trustee, we never saw her. So I guess my question is, do we need a membership for Rotary or can I just show up or?
Well, I think the good question, if, I'm going to take it up a notch, right? And say, because we're capturing board visibility and exposure, those are good things. So if we, I'll get to your question in a second. The, if we can, if one of your draft goals is to, is to address this, right? Which the board will engage in visibility and community engagement, however that may, may do, the logistics of that, if it's making sure that the college is a member. The college is a member of all of these chambers up and down. I believe, yeah, we double-check that all up and down. The individual Rotaries and Service Clubs, we have members who are, but it would make sense that constituents from different areas would belong to different service clubs. Or clubs that, or groups or foundations that lend themselves to your specific talent. So it's, I can't, I looked at you, now I can only think of librarians, right? But, but, you know, from Jennifer's side, it's a natural love for you. So representing yourselves on that, on that side is, you know, an easy thing for you to do and there's certainly a venue there, right? And Kyle belongs to, you know, a Rotary, I think, you know? And, and I think Jeff as well.
You know, I was just going to, what Rosario said, it, I don't know if it makes sense to brainstorm a little bit and probably not enough time to do that right now, but are there individual groups that were, we don't feel like we're represented or that we could ultimately target, in a sense, and make concerted efforts to target and have someone be a member or have a list of annual events where we know that, and I believe the board supervisors does this as well, where they make sure that at least one board member is at every single event or, and then obviously no more than, no more than two. And so they, they basically know, say, oh, no, that, you know, Brad and Diane are going to this meeting and Alfredo and Ryan are going, going to this community event. So they're just, they just know that there's always some sort of representative there. And I'm not sure what's the best way to effectuate that and do it in a productive way.
I think the logistic. I think the logistics, I, I've got several ideas for logistics. I think we can really get at that easily for you.
Obviously, it takes a lot more effort and probably gonna take some time, but I really do, I, I bet it pays a lot of dividends after a couple of years if we, if we really, really make a concerted effort there.
If you can coordinate as a board, right? And it's not just you going to stuff, right? But you really feel like you're more a, a piece of a coordinated effort that we have logistically kind of worked out for you. Um, you know, including being interviewed on Jeff's show, I suppose, you know? Maybe, many of you have already done that. If you haven't, that would be a good step, or maybe it's time to do that again, you know? Or editorial board meetings. I go to editorial board meetings, um, sometimes, you know, alone, sometimes with members. It would be fabulous to go together, right?
Yeah, no, I think, I think that would be good too. If, you know, if you, if you feel that it would be appropriate to have another board member, like we went to this, uh, it's kind of like a downtown, Napa Downtown, kind of more business-focused lunch, uh, where Dr. Kraft, uh, presented a little bit what's going on with student housing, which did a great job. Um, you know, and I was just there because I normally typically go to those lunches, but it's kind of, you know, I just, I don't even know if he knew that I was gonna be there.
Didn't know you were gonna be there.
Yeah, and, uh, but it was, I think it was nice to have another trustee there.
Yes, but we took the, took the opportunity to introduce you at least.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, this is good. I think we have a, a sense of this. Again, you can see why time is of an essence.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to throw in also that this one to me seems really, really closely tied to question number 19, which was about regularly seeking out the opinions of, of the communities. I feel like it's not just about us going out and saying, "Hey, look at me, I'm, I'm on the..." But also just making yourself available. I mean, I think we're all of us responsive when somebody approaches us, but we don't always make an effort to, to let people know that we are approachable. And so I don't know what that would look like if it meant like having, you know, fireside chat type things or, you know, open forum, you know, on campus or in the community, but just having more options.
It was good. There's clearly, I mean, we can all agree, I think, there's a theme here, right? That we can really capture, and I'm seeing the heads nod, so, well, this is working. I, I jumped ahead to 19 just to get it, but I'll back up a little bit. Same thing, right? 14, let's see, 16. "The board is seen in the community as a leading authority on higher ed and as an important source of information about the college and those needs." Some disagreement here and agree, so, you know, and no strongly agree. I think this may be, well, it's getting at certainly some of the things you're talking about, right? I mean, you know, your ability to be out there and coordinate. Also, it may be that you don't feel like you have the toolkit in terms of what you would need to do this. Here's a good example. I suppose I'll do this live, all right? But, um, every October, for the past two Octobers, we have, uh, the Legislative Breakfast on Higher Education, right? And we usually invite legislators to come in and talk about that. You know, so it may be too early for this, but if you were seen or you wanted to position yourselves as, on leaders as authorities in higher education, then a panel of the college's board, um, handling questions or doing a presentation at that event would seem to me to be getting at this kind of piece. It positions you in a way as authorities. If you're not this, I don't know who else is in the valley, right? I mean, you really are, right? You can go toe-to-toe with most people and talk about higher education stuff, at least community college stuff, right? And, and they're not going to have your depth of knowledge at all. So looking for opportunities to, to get you out there to talk about higher education, not going to the community trying to pitch something that the college wants or would like to position. That's different, right? Than, than getting information about what, what the community really desires and wants. Um, I think we do a really good job when we're focused as a, as a college about going after something. But, um, that's different than this. This is more proactive, long-term play.
I think you're, you're right that a toolkit would be something that would be very helpful. I mean, it's the, the, you know, the, uh, subject is so big...
It is.
...that, um, it'd be hard to even try to educate ourselves on, very deeply on any of the multitude of issues. So, um, some kind of a toolkit to help us focus a bit more, I think, would be very useful.
And you shouldn't, you know, been a trustee and you all have jobs. I mean, it's very hard. The toolkits are out there, and they all exist, but they exist on all these websites all over the place. So we, Holly and I had this conversation about, you know, working on her newsroom concept, which is, uh, she'll out for you, um, in the future, but having a press kit there. I mean, we should have a press kit, generally speaking, and it should generally reflect the kind of talking points that you would want to present in the community. What, what are we about, you know? How do we, how are we different than, how are you, cocktail party? Tell me about the difference between you and Solano Community College and Santa Rosa J.C. If you can't easily handle that, um, then we need to get some tools into your, we need to get some stuff into your, in your kit here. You should be able to answer that one, um, you know, fairly good, besides just being way better on every...
I think the newsletter too is something that we could capture a lot of these with too.
A separate board newsletter?
Uh, well, we could just have a portion. I mean, I think you're addressing the board already, but if we did, I mean, a profile of each trustee.
Yeah.
Every few months.
We have an external newsletter, and we have a monthly code, but as we develop, we plan to begin to have more regular internal newsletters and then create an external version that highlights the things we're doing faculty, board members, and it'll be a real vehicle to do that.
And it, and it differs, I mean, you, you all are very aware that you speak with one voice, right? So you've got to be kind of careful when you're out there on the radio or newspaper or whatever, because people see your, your presentation or speak, you know, on behalf of, of the board. I think, I think we're past those days. I think most people really get a good grip on that. Um, but I think having just that, you know, some, some really solid pieces that you can go to that are based on the college's planning, where we think we're going vision, you know, in a vision place, and also on, on your goals. Be very nice to answer that question I just had to you, just saying, "Well, I'm not exactly sure of, of every difference, but I can sure share Napa Valley's goals. Here's what we do." All right? Good, safe territory, nice, all right? You're good. Drop the mic, move into the next room, right? Yeah, okay. Okay. Let's see. "Board has engaged local officials and obtained their endorsement of our mission and work." Same thing, I think. Here we have, you know, agreement, um, with just a little bit of disagreement. This means to me, I think you're making individual meetings, you know, so it's, it's really split here. I think we're doing better here, you know, generally, generally speaking. I think you felt you were doing a little better here. It's hard because of the, because we're Napa in a small rural area, but we're very splintered. It's, it's really hard to get a grip on, on city council or the supervisors and, you know, are they all on the same page? And the answer is no, they're all emergent kind of, kind of pieces. So, um, your individual conversations with elected officials should be reflective of the board's nuanced goals, you know? So they keep, it, it's just like if we were going to Sacramento to present to, to, at that level, we'd take students with us who would be articulating the need that were there for them to carry, to carry forward to legislation or something else. And, and we are going to get to that later on in legislative committee piece as well.
I just want to, uh, real quick, just throw in, it, it's several times when we've been talking about elected officials, we've talked about the Board Supervisors, we've talked about city council. There are a couple of other elected groups that are equally forgotten, the school board and also the NCOE board. I think we would do well to make certain we include them when we talk like that.
Yes, and we have, over the years, entertained the idea, and we tried to get it together a couple of years ago, a joint board meeting in VUSD and this board. Some of those things could be, could be interesting. Or at least a, all-county, Barbara Nimko a few years ago had an all-county, um, board meeting where she brought all the board members up to Yountville. Was, uh, has any of you attended that? Maybe Raphael? Yeah, it's been a while ago, right?
Yeah, I went to a couple of those.
Yeah, and, and I think that it's good, because people see you at least, right? And, and identify. And that's on my schedule to talk to her tomorrow about, in fact.
Is that something that we could even host at like the PAC at some point?
Yeah, sure. They, we need to feed them really good food. That's the trouble, you know?
Barbara did one with lobster one time.
Yeah, that's right. Messy lobster.
Throwing it out there.
So an all-county board, right? So we, that would be. Summary of open-ended, um, I think the board, um, performs very well, robust discussions, asking good questions, hearing public comment, collegiality and respect. Some, I think those strengths have come through good and bad times. I mean, you, you know, I'm not sure that we would have arrived at all of those as strengths without a board that was in a, a bit of turmoil for a while, but you sharpened those tools. In, in the bottom line, after a while, you really, this board is intelligent enough and schooled enough and professional enough not to ignore public comment. I mean, you think about it, and I think that's key, right? And, and the robust discussions that you have, I, I listen to. And, um, that probably more of those are good for you, right? To, to talk through. "Our board needs improvement in the following areas: continuing education for trustees about college ops, programs, functions of the board, community relations." I think we just kind of hit on some of those things. It is a, um, I alluded to it just a little bit earlier, but I'm, I'm attending, um, Wheelhouse, I'm a Wheelhouse Fellow at UC Davis, and that, that consists of CEOs across the state and, and 14 of us. And basically, it's so, it's such a complex world. I can't begin to know what half of Fay knows or half of what Oscar knows or half of what Bob knows. All I can do as a CEO is hire excellent people and try to gather their information and do the best I can do, right? And, and they don't know, you know, what, what their subordinates know. I mean, so it's for you to expect to rule all that up, you know, and be experts in all this stuff is, is just too much to ask. So I think that what you can do is focus on those high-line pieces that the Community College League, CCLC, puts forward. I, I really like that we're going. I think we were the only district last time at CCLC with every trustee there. You know, and I pushed that down their throat, which is really good. So the, um, the advantage of that is that it shows, um, it shows that you are wanting to improve and, and move, and people notice that, by the way. "Other comments: Need overall vision for the college?" I agree. "We're working on visioning." Now, I'm going to talk about that a little bit in the President's Report. "More connection to other elected boards." You just talked about it, which is great. "More social engagements." Maybe, I think we, we alluded to those, right? I don't think you mean social engagements for the board, but maybe, yeah, maybe? Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. Okay, could be.
Beg your pardon. Excuse me?
Yeah, those can be very boring if you can't talk about anything, you know, as a, you know? But I think, I think engagements where you can get at those questions we were talking about. Engage people in the community in relevant conversations. In this case, you wear two hats, but you're really a one-trick pony. I mean, in the community, as a board member, you have to make a decision whether or not you're going to be a board member or something else. And so, and if you're a board member, then that's your lead, and you also happen to wear the hat of your profession or what you, what you do. But, but the opposite is very difficult, and that's a balance, all right? I, I think that, in a community like this, you're CEO, president, I'm the president of the college, no matter where I go, where I'm shopping, where I'm eating, wherever. You can never kind of drop that. Now, I get paid different, and I, and my role is different, all of that, but it is something for you to think about, you know, how you lead. You know, if you want to be seen as a higher educational leader, then lead with it, all right? Rather than maybe some other conversation. And more oversight of facilities. I'm not sure what that means, but I think it came up from really the, the fields, issues, landscaping pieces, um, probably those, right? Repair, replacement, modification, I would guess, right? And, and those are, you know, solid pieces for us to be working on. All right, so that is, we took longer, but I like it. We kind of did two or three things here. So that's this first section. The goal setting, so let's move to the goal setting just a little bit. Um, the goals for 1921, right, which is now this next section, right? We're working on two years. The tips, right? So now we're going to work on broad-based goals that address your fiduciary and policy leadership role. Really, those are your two main items that you can kind of function from. If you start dipping down, and you know better than this, right? Into program development or curriculum, then you, you've got to be careful not to pierce the umbrella of a 10-plus-one or other constituency groups pieces. Use terms such as ensure, foster, monitor, create a climate. Those are, those are pieces that are really strong for you in goal setting. And I think in terms of the goals that you have existing, are you passing that one up, Catherine? Existing goals? So I gave you an example there. Ensure the board members engage, and this is now maybe identified, communicate, listen, gather information vis-à-vis attending. Attending an event is not engaging in an event, all right? At community and civic events. So, and we've already talked about how that might be a more, um, productive piece. Focus, I think, on three or five achievable goals. I have seen board goals with 20. I mean, it's, you know, but I've also seen strategic plans from colleges that are like 19 pages deep. I mean, I don't even know what you do with that, right? There's no way to really objectively look at it. They've rolled so many sub-objectives up into that, that it becomes inoperable. So I think my suggestion is that you adopt three to, three to five, you know? Strong pieces. Fast forward for a minute, right? If you will. It's, it's July or August, right, of 2020. Here I am again, right? Here you are again, a year later, and we're addressing the goals you set. You should feel pretty good about what you've done, right? Or able to analyze the pieces that, that need help, right? Yes. So, yeah, why don't you put that up on the screen? And I'm going to grab some water really fast. Say hi to Michael. He is, uh, he is streaming live from Italy.
Yay.
Hello, Michael.
Hello, Michael.
Shouldn't we have him on a screen somewhere?
But he said it was nine hours, so it's...
What time is it in Italy?
It's like 3:00 in the morning in Barcelona right now.
Is he crazy?
Is he bored?
I don't feel sorry for him. Sorry.
We miss you, Michael. You're out there though. Okay, so our existing, um, our existing goals, which are up on the big screen for you, but you also have them, are really the strategic goals of the college. They just have, we've changed just the descriptors at the beginning to make them more board-like and less institutional. Ensure the district works with local educational partners. Foster a climate that engages students and assists in their progress. Monitor and support. Increasing NBC student achievement. Monitor and ensure physical stability. Foster a climate to enhance collaboration. So basically, what I'd like to do is just have you talk about them and see whether or not you feel that you're on the right track for these. These are your goals, you're accountable for these to yourself, but also the, the community. So basically, it's kind of how you, how you did. I, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't look for, specifically for areas where you, you didn't do well, but I would, you know, welcome those if I were you. So you might just, you know, take a look at it. Local educational partners would be, I would assume, high schools, right? The K-12s all the way through, I think. Who other educational partners that might pop to your mind? It's good, Raff. County Office of Education, I'll give you that one, right? Yeah? And also, you know, maybe educational partners, maybe even Pacific Union, Union Pacific, Up Valley. The other educational partners in some way are, are other community colleges, are sister community colleges that are near. We, you know, we coordinate with them. As you know, we can't do everything we'd like to do because they're doing it, so sometimes that makes a difference.
Would we consider the public library an educational partner?
Ah, yeah, I think that, I think we could.
There's nonprofit groups, right? That, uh, they're starting at 10,000 degrees, I know that.
Yes, yes, exactly. Yeah, nonprofit groups are good. The educational partners, I guess you could look, you know, going this vein, you could certainly say Festival of Napa Valley, their mission statement is... Their mission statement is, is fostering education for the arts and music in the valley. And, and all the dollars go back as a nonprofit to support that.
I guess, since our job is to not make this happen, but to ensure that it happens.
Right.
How, are there some ways that we can build in, um, I don't know, processes? So, like, that, that we could do, like, walkthroughs or something like, you know? How do I, how would I, as a trustee, other than just hearing, getting a report, know that the incoming students are getting what they need? Is like, you know, could, can we shadow what happens in the registration office one day? Or something like that, without getting into it, but just watching and observing? Is that something that we could do?
I think that's, um... It's, it's a, it's a good, I'm thinking about the answer here, obviously. But, you know, a trustee being on campus is fine. Letting me know, or the staff know is good. Hanging out in an office, watching people, so can be a little intimidating. So, as long as they know you're there and what you're there for. Oscar has invited you, and you've had a, I think you've met with, uh, I think you've met, new trustees certainly have met with all, all the VPs. It's certain, and I think, generally speaking, I'm going to review a little bit either tonight or next month, our kind of orientation for new board trust, for new trustees, but also for all of you. I think, I think asking students is really an appropriate piece. I mean, appropriate. I mean, if somebody's standing in...
I wasn't sure if you said inappropriate.
No, appropriate. I mean, you know, in some ways, it, it's not bad to ask a student who's standing in line, identify yourself, right? You know? They may not know who trustee is, you know? But, um, you know, what do you, what do you hope to accomplish by enrolling in the college? You know, somebody standing in, in financial aid is a good question, reasonable, right? There are areas where you wouldn't want to encroach, right? Because then it would, can be seen as micromanagement or inappropriate, and we've all been down that, that road. So, you have to be careful a little bit. I think that tying them, your goals that are set for me should, should be tied to this. So, when your evaluation of, of the president's goals, and, and the goals that you set for me are five to seven goals, then you have to look in totality at the institution, how we're kind of moving along, right? That's also something. So, the reports that Dr. Wallnor brings to you, or the vice presidents bring to you, you know? And, and you would say, um, if we're really focusing on equipping incoming students, there's a lot of activity that's happening in, in, in Oscar's world, I think, really in student affairs. I, I think you would agree with that, Oscar. I hope, I, you know, he doesn't have any choice, he's got to agree with it, I suppose. The, learning more about that would be good. I mean, making, several of you said I'd like to, I'm going to be on campus, and I'd like to meet with X. I think letting me know is great. Connecting with, with, um, vice presidents is easier. Once you go below that, if you're meeting with a dean, it becomes a little more power-based. If you're meeting with faculty, you have to, you just have to be very cautious and careful about the, what you're trying to accomplish, right?
I think, you know, even like, we've, we've done a few, it's been a while, but we've done a few things. Like, we went over and we looked at the, I think it was the career...
Yes.
Center, or the transfer center, or something like that. But just, just like, almost like getting like a show and tell...
Yeah.
From, from the staff there, like, what the processes are and how they, how they help students. And just to kind of give us a, a more information also for when we're talking in the community to be able to answer questions.
So, we did, I think for, um, several years, two or three, we did pre-board workshops where we visited different kinds of things that were going on. And I could kind of feel after a while, maybe the last year, we didn't do very many the last six or seven months. I felt we were waning a little bit on that. There was not quite that interest. We had other stuff to kind of roll into. But maybe coming back, in retrospect, keeping, keeping those up, really focusing on equipping incoming students. This is the conversation in, in the state, is really not access. We did a great job of access during the nineties and early 2000. Now, we're focusing on throughput, efficiency, success. How many people are going on? And then, and then you more divide that with how many are transferring and how many are, are getting a terminal degree here. And it starts to, you start to boil down. I hear you on this one. It may be that we have to do a, a different kind of report. I think, when was your report coming out, your, your student affairs? You just did it, right, the student affairs?
Yeah, that's, they'll be published late August for, for this current year that they just ended. But I had it one out, I believe it was seven months ago or so, which was, this is last year's.
Talk, just talk a little bit about for them, what, what they might expect there.
What that is, is that it's, for the last seven or eight years, I've asked all my managers with the student affairs to, to answer, I think there's like five questions. The first one is to, to, to note the two, two or three top accomplishments that they, that they had for the year. And then, I mean, they, their, their operation or, or themselves. And then, and then the second question is asking two or three of, of the, of the objectives that they didn't meet, whatever it was that they felt that they could have accomplished, but, but they didn't, and, and why. And then, and then another one is, what is, what are two or three of your future goals? So, and then there's one question to ask about how much they like me. No, just kidding, no, just kidding. No, the, the question also, uh, also asks about the outcomes, the, the studentary outcomes that, that they proposed, and how well they did with those. And so, the idea here is, is that it allows them to sort of regurgitate with their own minds things that they've done throughout the year, and things that worked, and things that didn't work. But also allows me some information, or one of the questions is the data. How many students did, did you serve with the respective area? Which, again, helps us, helps, helps me with information for when we work on our unit plans and things of that nature. So, this is a report that, that we've done every year for about the last seven or eight years. And the recent one, the one that just finished for seven, for eighteen, nineteen year will probably be published and given to you probably at just September meeting or for certain by, by October. So, again, that's, that's, that's what we've done with the student affairs.
Thanks, thanks, Oscar. And I, and I think, generally speaking, I, I would give you the nod here in feeling that we're moving towards, certainly, we're moving towards our customer service orientation towards students. I mean, it's, this is, we're no longer doing what we used to do in decades past, the convenience of our own constituencies. So, be it scheduling all the way to class updates or about an interior conversation, not an external conversation. And sometimes the students, inappropriately, were the last people to be asked. So, I think that that has turned completely around. We have, as you know, AB 705 is really this big one out there. That is primarily still, at the state level and at college level, an interior conversation. There aren't a lot of students who have weighed in on how that feels and what they think it's going to be done. So, um, what we're trying to do, and I, I know Fay's going to do this, and I know Oscar, is, is survey the students at different benchmarks along the way to ensure that what we're doing is the, the right thing. How, how we're teaching and learning is the right thing, the support services we're doing. Because coming back to you in two years with a metrics report, hmm, you know, they didn't do very well. You know, okay, right? But that doesn't do you or our students, our present students, any good. And let me think about some others here. Foster a climate that engages NBC students and assists in their progress towards educational and job training goals. Again, I would, I would say, generally speaking, at least from my vantage point, I feel, I feel solid about this. Now, these really are, these are, these are the college's strategic goals. They were just, you just adopted them with some slightly different language on the front end that was less directive, right? So, you, you know, in, in your wisdom, I guess, what, you know, using these was complete alignment. So, you're in complete alignment with a college because they're the same. I think that you have the, the power of decision as you're working through policies, budgets, the stuff that you hear, you know, technology that's coming your way, those kind of conversation. Is this, here's the question, I mean, is this engaging students and assists in their progress? If it doesn't, then there needs to be something here. We're certainly not putting more blocks up, roadblocks. And there were times in a college's life, not this one, of course, but other colleges' life, that they did. They would make it onerous to enroll, onerous to get financial aid, difficult. You had to make ten stops where one would work. And we're actively working on those things to improve those things across the board right now. Monitor and support increasing, I'm going over these, we can come back. Jump in anytime, please. Monitor and support increasing student achievement and completion of education and job training goals. We are now, as you know, you know, we used to be called basic aid, but community support. So, we don't get paid, you know, for FTE, for appropriation of student count. But we do receive dollars in the successful accomplishment of student achievement, completion of their job training goals. And, and, and that's reflected in different ways. And so, we, this is one you'd really want to keep an eye on. I know we tend to, to look at enrollment, housing enrollment, right? Well, most colleges in the state, with very few exceptions, have lower, lower enrollment, almost everybody. And if I were to show you this graph in the sky here, between now and 2023, you're going to see somewhere between a twelve and twenty-three percent decrease across the state in enrollment. It, it's, um, the baby boom kiddos are, are gone, right? They're done. So, that's going to really severely impact colleges. We, however, find ourselves in a, in a, kind of a different era with some support base level here. So, how do we then educate fewer students? Should we not be able to? Your question, if I were trustee, everything else being equal, if our population is, is down a bit or stable around 5,000, shouldn't we be providing vastly superior education and support? And for me as president, my answer is absolutely, right? I don't have to spread this out over 30,000 students, right? You know, we could have a much higher FTE and still be on, in, on community support. It, it wouldn't, it wouldn't look like this. It's not quite right, but it kind of works. Monitor and ensure physical, fiscal stability as it transitions. Um, I, you rated yourselves pretty high on this. I think we spend a lot of time working to ensure that our budget is completely transparent to the, the college community. I don't think anybody would accuse this administration or you all of having a secret pot of money, which was, it was kind of derigger, you know? Twenty years ago, it was like, I know you guys have a couple millions stashed somewhere, you know? But I, I think here, we've, we've established a culture through the board's monitoring of this, right? You ask good, good questions. You have a subcommittee that, you know, ensures this, all those, those things are made. So, I don't feel that, um, I feel that you're doing a good job here, both monitoring and ensuring. Yes, Beth?
My question is, are we still in transition? Or should this goal be changed to monitor and ensure the fiscal stability of NBC as a, as a community-supported district?
Yeah, this was established in, um, back in, what, seventeen?
Right.
And, you know, Bob has got, you know, you've, you've got a great answer for this. I mean, I, I think, well, yes, he does, he does. Bob and I worked on a, a kind of a five-year, what did we do, four, five-year rollout? Why, why, talk about that for a minute? That's a good one.
So, just, um, looking at the numbers as we go forward. And so, we've transitioned, but, um, we're not as solidly community-supported as, as other community-supported districts are. And, uh, moving forward, we look at what we anticipate the total assessed value will be and how the total assessed value will increase, and whether or not anyone is expecting any kind of an economic downturn going forward. So, it's important for us to be looking at sources of revenue and uses of revenue and monitoring that closely as we go forward so that we make sure that we don't, um, uh, fall into the trap that other community-supported districts have fallen into. I mean, if you were to ask any of the community-supported districts in the state how much extra money they have, even those districts whose, uh, property tax revenues exceed what the state would give them by thirty to forty million dollars, their answer would be, we don't have any extra money. Because they've made commitments, they've spent up to that level. And so, it's important for us to be, uh, looking at, making sure that we spend within our means and that we look to building up or, or putting funds aside in our reserve so that we, we are in a good position.
Isn't that something that you'll continuously do? Though it's not necessarily transitioning to this new form of, of, um, of monetary support. But isn't that something that you would continue to do no matter what?
It is. However, it, quite frankly, is easier to do when you're community-supported than if you're receiving funding from the state. Because that's really, if you look at, at the districts, and even our district to a degree, if you looked at us in the past ten years, those ups and downs of the state budget are difficult for any of us to predict. But predicting total assessed value and property tax, uh, income is a lot easier for a local district.
So, do you feel like, um, the transition period would, will be five years to really get a handle on it? And feel like we transitioned, we're done, we know what we're doing, and we can move forward?
I would say that's, that's correct, yeah.
Sorry. What could this board do to help facilitate that better? Maybe that could be a good goal for us to drill down.
In my experience, and, and working with, really closely with, um, the staff here, one of the things that really impacts budget decisions is really having a clear idea of what your priorities are and what, what the goals are, what the strategic plan is. Because, and actually, you know, you know, in the past, I've found that when you have no money, it's easy. And when you have a lot of money, it's easy. It's when everything's fine that things can be a little difficult because you really have to pay close attention. And, and, and that's one of the things I'm really happy about, is going to the zero-based budgeting because you really do have to look at where your money's going and why. And, and not just, oh, add three percent. You know, it's, it's not just moving incrementally forward, it's really paying attention to what you're doing and why you're doing it.
We are, um, embracing the, the way forward, which is our financial, is what we call our financial plan. It, it did what it was supposed to do the first six years or so. So, this updated version will address the new realities of Napa Valley College, which are community support and also what I would call, you know, blended revenue sources. So, grants, other funds that we can apply for, the auxiliary funds that we're working on. You should have a good idea, and we should also be able to look out four or five years with those funds and feel, um, more secure and have goals set. You know, albeit, you know, housing is going to meet a lot of requirements for student housing, but it can't be a drain on the institution. And in fact, it, it should add to the value of the institution's ability to address student support by being a positive cash flow piece. If it's not, then we really have missed a mark, right? Unless you all, in your decision-making, feel that that's, that's a piece of support that can be, um, that is, is an ongoing expense. And then we have to find some other revenue source to offset that. But that is really not the goal, you know, at this place. So, um, I think those are good. I think just, um, coming back at them, um, I, I think, I don't have much, I, I think Bob's approach really in, in presenting the annual budget, you know, to the Audit and Finance Committee, and then having you all. Sometimes I've, I have felt over the past year that we spent a little short shrift on it, at, at the board level. Should have spent more time kind of diving into it. And it can be, it can be, you know, painful sometimes, you know what I mean? You know, the subcode and what's that?
But Bob will make it more exciting, though, right?
Yeah, yes, exactly right. So, and we've had this discussion, I mean, I, you know, we've, we've been in other districts or, or led other districts, where every year you get the same giant presentation, and you glaze over after a while. So, I think, I think trying to find a, a good balance. But you should be receiving some information on finance, you know, other than just the warrants and, and that kind of consent calendar, something that, that gives you strength. So, if you're asked, like I am, there's only one question I'm ever asked anywhere, and that is, how's the college doing, right? That's it, right? You can address it all the way. Depending on where I'm at, you know, I'll, I'll say something like, great, strong budget, balanced with a positive reserve, right? I'm, I'm in a business meeting with conservative people who really, and they're like, fantastic. I mean, we're not, we didn't talk about students at all, right? But that's what they want to hear. But you, you need some of this background. Foster climate to hand... Foster climate to enhance collaboration between NBC and the community and civic partners. I think we are doing that. We have, we've had, we kind of have examples across the, the institution. Everywhere from, I would say, the, the legislative, um, meetings that we have to outreaches, to the Mariachi Festival, which, you know, reached out in a whole different way, um, to, you know, constituencies. We have dual enrollment and C cap that we're working with our, um, with our local high schools. I think that we're now kind of, you know, trying to understand, you know, there's a difference between community and civic partners. It's interesting in terms of, we do, I think we do well in foundations. We're starting to reach out to foundations. And our, and our own foundation is becoming more central and involved in the life of the college through all kinds of things, fundraising, general fundraising, and then, you know, as you know, a capital campaign for, um, a, a building. So I, I think we're doing well there. This is, this collaboration is only about one-on-one conversations of yours with people in the community. Really, it's, it's about enhancing that relationship somehow, because there's no way that we, as a big institution, really can know all the, I think there's 500 now, um, wineries, is that right? Somewhere in there, up and down? And there are at least that many foundations, 501(c)(3)'s in the valley. It's a huge list of 501(c)(3)'s. I passed it out to you one time, in fact, and, and, uh, it's small type, 11 pages, and, um, our foundation, you know, appears like on page 11, you know, there's a little highlight, you might remember that. And, um, so it's a very competitive environment that we're in. And the discontinuity this, of this, and everything else we've been talking about, it is, it is a truth that everyone knows about Napa Valley College. And I think we enjoy a really good reputation up and down the valley. Thank you. And I, and I think in terms of the, the overarching piece of kind of one degree, you, you know, you know somebody that's going here or has gone here or something. So you have that to base on. We're, we're not really, we don't have a highly transient population who's never, ever heard of the college. And then I run into somebody who's been here a long time and they ask the question, right? Oh, it's a college, huh? Yeah, huh, yeah. You have a performing arts center. No, I never knew that. All those questions. So we still have our work to do. And this is about those conversations that, that I think we worked on earlier. If we were, Catherine's just reminded me, that if we were going to come up with some themes for our draft, for your draft goals, um, can we now kind of capture those from what we've captured just generally? I mean, you, we capture those in our conversations about where we were, how we, how we've done, and, and we propose it along the way, but I'd like to see whether or not we can thematically capture some pieces where, that I would then take, work on with our staff, come back to you with the, with the board chair or vice chair. Or if, if you want, Kyle, you can, you could clearly slam together a subcommittee, an ad hoc subcommittee on this, some boards do. We have done that in the past here, um, to have people work on it as well.
You guys think we could get through some of them right now?
You still have 15 minutes, all right, to work.
We can actually go a little bit over too.
We could.
For the sake of getting this part done. Uh, or do you guys want to do?
How, how do the, um, you said come up with some themes. I think we, we did.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe what we do now is codify them, right? We'll put them on this sheet to make sure that we're on the right track, right? Maybe that's what I, that's what I mean. So maybe we have Catherine just, why don't you just call out one that you feel is, we really drilled on and we'll write it up.
Well, I think the, especially those first two, um, the review of the, the goals more often and, and where we can, and where it makes sense, tie them specifically to some of those goals. I know, like you said, that, you know, everything we do is, is supposed to be tied to those goals, but I think there are, there are times that we should, you know, actually do that and look at it purposefully.
And not, and not just for our own benefit, but for everybody's, it was like, that, so that we can say, yeah, we're doing this because, and make certain that everyone else knows that we're doing this because.
Yeah. And, and the second one, the, the visibility and, and engaging with the community more and some of the things that, as potential examples, you know, that, um, we discussed about members of the board getting out to community service organizations, you know, that, um, parades, you know, and, you know, do other things with, equipped with our, our toolkit or, I think those are two that I feel strongly about.
I, I agree with that, and you know, and, and I'm not sure that you think about yourself this way, more educational leaders or community leaders, but you're also politicians. And, and it becomes very clear to, to staff and everyone, when it, when election time comes, then you click into gear, right? I mean, you have to. So you're, you're only, you're only as good as you, as your reelection. So some of this is enhancing the board's stability. I, I believe, I think new blood on the board is great. I think there's time for in and out. I mean, it, it's na, it's healthy, right? But it's also, um, important if you, if you have the desire and, uh, and the vision for it to, to maintain your board seat. I think that's a good thing, and this kind of gets at, at that as well. Um, so being in a parade and, you know, waving to other people. And, and I'm with you there. We, we need to do our work. As I alluded to earlier, Holly and I have some things on the, on the, on the drawing board already. And, and, and I've worked with Catherine, so we'll work as a kind of a president staff of fleshing out some ideas. You, you won't have to get lost in the operational aspects of this. Uh, and we'll just come back to you and check to say, is this, does this seem like it's going to be a solution, right, for those? So those two are good. What, any other, what are some other themes?
Well, are we just talking about themes? Cause it seems like we're, these themes that are on the board right there, or is everything that we talked about where maybe there's a little bit of?
Anything.
Not, you name it. Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is anything that, you know, that you would like to bring up, that you, you've?
Well, certainly, you know, right, just because we, we all agree that we're good at fiscal stewardship and we, we get constant board reports. I mean, I think, uh, our fiscal, you know, responsibility should always be, always be a, a goal. Um, so.
I think that's the same one for me too, is more of what we can do for, you know, becoming more community-funded.
Well, I think, you know, you're, you're, oh, I'm sorry, I looked up.
Nope, just maybe even re-adopting the previous goal that we had on the fiscal stability.
Still relevant.
If four, the, the way that four reads right now is, we can, we can change this a little bit, but, but focusing on this. I think the, I'm going to need your support. If we, if, if we go forward in the way that I think we've talked about it at cabinet level and with several of our constituencies on the way forward, it includes, it includes investment in going out for grants, right? So they're not free. We have to, we have to pay people to write grants for us on the hope that that grant comes in. And, you know, so there has to be kind of a, uh, you should know about that, and you should also encourage those things. So some of them make great sense. Same thing for housing or for a cafe or the bookstore or other kinds of things as they roll. Um, that, that whole concept of blended revenues is really going to hit hard. Another piece that I heard at the wheelhouse in the conference, everybody, everybody knows for certain that we're going to hit a downturn in bad times in California, because we always do. I mean, so whether that's 2023, that's the number that most people are throwing out there, um, not sooner. But we should be, by that time, insulated from that. Based on your, ensuring that our reserve is in the proper place, that you, you've made decisions in terms of your labor agreements or your other agreements of investment, of what that looks like. So there's a little bit of, um, monitoring, but ensuring it, maybe being proactive somehow in that.
And I think that right there is the theme in itself, is what we can do to ensure that.
And I wonder too, um, if the board, it's, it's on the topic of money and fiscal stuff, so I don't know if it would be something that could be tied into this goal, if it would be something separate. But, um, also just kind of thinking money-wise, you know, what can we do to help students, um, afford college? You know, so things like, again, like the housing or textbooks or, you know, tutoring, things like that. What, what, just so that we're mindful when we're making decisions like about parking, how much it costs to park? You know, what, what is that, what is that doing to our student population too?
I'm with you. The, this may be to, almost to your subcommittee. I mean, the, the big difference, you can see a big, community colleges started really in the 60s, 70s, and you see this huge jump in enrollment in, in the late 60s, 70s. And it's, it's only attributed to one thing, Pell Grant. Pell Grant came into being. People could start to afford to go to college, and you went from a very low enrollment across the state, like 200,000, to like 600,000 the next year, and it's just gone straight up with that. So your engagement at the legislative level of, you know, encouraging staff and the college to make stands, you know, for continued, um, financial aid, for different kinds of, what, I, I can't speak intelligently on the Pell Grant, maybe you can't either, Oscar, but you, chances are you can. I mean, there was, there was a change in the Pell Grant, I think, last year or the year before.
The, the, the change, well, prior to last year, uh, students can receive a Pell Grant pretty much for a longer duration of their educational experience. That's why many years ago, you had the professional student who just never left, because there was a, there, there's a little, that flow of, uh, funds coming in from, 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 from the Pell Grant for them. But now students have to be very, and very precise on, on their major, and it's good for a total of six years. So undergraduate students that attend any, any college have six years to, to receive their aid, have a Pell Grant, and after that, it's gone.
Won't, won't we see an increase once the word really gets out about the first year free, possibly the second year free, as far as tuition goes? Aren't we bracing up for an increase because of that?
It, it'll be, it'll be interesting to see what happens here statewide. There are, I'll just give you an aggregate number, 30 to 35% of all promised dollars went unused.
Right.
The, the requirements are too stiff. I mean, people don't want to come in for that amount of units in that regard with those GPAs. So they're kind of having to rethink it. And I'm not sure about, I couldn't answer the question, because somebody asked me today about ours, and I, I didn't know how we're doing really on, on promise. I think you take a look.
About the other question, just here in front of me. The, the, uh, Napa College for last year, for this, the issue they just finished, eight, uh, the, the 18, 19 year, we spent, there was 93, uh, financial awards that were made on the college promise, uh, for a total of $80,000. And basically what that is, again, that, that, that one piece of the promise funds are for those individuals who, first of all, that, that, that applied through the FAFSA are full-time, uh, but did not qualify for any financial aid other than this particular scholarship. So, and again, that was sort of the, the, the purpose of, of that, of, of that resource, was to include the middle and the upper-middle, uh, class families in, in, uh, in making themselves available or being, being available for, for some sort of assistance. And the issue we've done here is that we've covered, um, uh, all, all the, uh, all the fees that are related to, to the, to the courses, as well as the mandatory fees. So health fee, the, the, the $1 rep fee, the, all those fees, so $33 worth of fees, plus the, the Roman fees are, are, are covered through this source. Currently, as of, as of, uh, as of, as of today, uh, for the 2019, 2020 year, we have received 333, uh, promise applications. So there's a lot of students that now are learning about this, this opportunity through the outreach activities. Uh, in fact, we just had an, an event on Wednesday here where we had some like 86 students from our local schools, many of which were, were, were Baron Canyon High School students, uh, who are incoming freshmen and have, have been made, made aware of these sources if they weren't made aware prior to this time.
What's the total, do you know the total dollars in terms of?
Bob, I think this year was like 210,000 or thereabouts.
Yes, it was just slightly over 200,000 this year.
So we were in the same group. We underspent, right? I mean, you know, we had dollars left on the table for that. So either we need to rethink, you know, what, what we're going to support or how we're going to support, or increase the length of, of the time of the support or something. And, um, this money will go away as well, so people are a little itchy on, you know, how long this is going to last. But, so we'll kind of see. I mean, the legislature may beat all of our promise campaigns to the punch and really go back to, uh, what I enjoyed, which was a $5 a unit, you know, community college experience. Will that change the game? They're hoping, you know, but there's, so there's a lot of stuff kind of out there. But I, I am with you here. I think a strong, what do we have here? Foster climate that engages NBC students and assists in their progress, educational to training. How do you feel you did on that? I mean, generally. We, we want to continue on this, right? Is that the theme that we're looking for, is to make sure students are front and center somehow?
Well, since you brought it up.
Yes.
I, I, I kind of am having a deja vu moment, because I think I asked this question, um, when we adopted these. I've never really been super clear on the difference between number two and number three. Is that something that you could articulate?
I, I think student achievement. If Robin were here, I think she would be framing this through data. So three is, you know, student achievement is only what the data shows. Everything, everything else is qualitative. And so you're looking at completion of educational and job training goals. So if four, if 10 students say they want to be a nurse and eight get there, then you're at 80%. You don't know that for a while, so you're always looking backwards a little bit. But that data, that achievement data is important for us, but it's in aggregate. And, and I won't, I'll try to stay clear here. Thinking in aggregate, aggregate on number three is a really important thing institutionally. But where you live is individual students. So somehow we have to make a difference for individual students while being folk, while focusing on the aggregate data. So the little things that stop students from enrolling, you know, or, you know, parking could be, could be one. It would be awful. I mean, we, it would be awful if, if some students are not coming here, completing and moving on to successful lives, because they can't afford a parking pass. I don't know if that's true or not true. I didn't used to think food was an issue, but I've certainly been educated on that, you know, so. And now, and the same thing for other things. So we could really look at this? I think it's, it, it, it's some study. Again, we're coming, we're coming to an end here, but we're just going to add these in, so you can start working on these, and you'll have another bite at the apple in terms of e, email responses back to Catherine over this, or, or Kyle, um, over the next month, and then solidifying these at your next board meeting. But I think, how would you like this theme to be? Some student success again, or enhancing student success? You get the difference between two and three?
I, I see those as, are we, which ones are we talking about? Two and five or two and three?
Well, the question was two and three. The difference between, I see two, two really comes out of a shop most often through, oh, man. I was going to say Student Affairs, but it's not true anymore. I mean, you, you know, student support in terms of tutoring, um, in terms of success centers, in terms of faculty time, you know, spent, you know, working with students is definitely assists in their progress. What we have to address in the future, having a catalog, having a 200-page catalog, it doesn't really assist students in the aggregate. I mean, we offer in some ways a lot for our size. And should we, could we, how do we adapt that, those kinds of things? So I think you could pay attention to the, the curriculum development, program development, you know, where the monies are flowing. We are community, we are comprehensive community college, so we're a little bit of a, a distributed piece, right? With kind of the center of the sciences, math, English being in the middle with the most units. But I don't think it's, we don't want to forget about the individual student success in the arts, right? Or in the?
But in terms of like, you know, operational stuff, and I think part of that, part of the reason why it comes out like this is because we took the institutional plan and just put the stuff on the front. So from operational standpoint, it makes perfect sense to have them as two separate goals. But from an oversight, I wonder if we could blend the two and just, you know, because.
I think we, I like blending those two, but also when we talk about the experience for the student, what about like maybe the whole experience of registering online and?
Yes.
Going to the, through the student center, like?
So I, I wasn't in the room when you guys came up with these, but looking at them, I feel a connection where if, if we do two well, we are successful in three. And three helps us figure out what we need to do better for two. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So it's kind of circular for two and three. And I like the idea of combining them because I think it is addressing the very same thing. One is trying to figure out how we, how, have, or make it happen. And number three is how do we prove that we're successful or not? And then what areas can we go back and again, look at, right? So combining those two would make sense.
And then for another theme, I was thinking, since I, we want to move along, what about also visibility and exposure in the community, but, but also in the, the district itself? Which would tie into what we talked about with visiting different departments and site visits.
You mean your, y- y- your visibility as a board with your current constituents inside the college?
Yes.
Right? And then the, in the community region and state, right? I mean, all, all three of those.
The constituents.
Yeah, I think that could be a, a very good piece.
And then another thing I want to make certain doesn't get lost, when we were talking about the, the first couple of themes and Rafael mentioned the toolkit idea. I think we really do need to, I don't know if it needs to be just something that is built in or if it needs to be a separate goal, but just making certain that we are really grounded in facts and know what we're talking about when people ask us questions.
Mm-hmm. So we, and that may be tied up in, but we won't, we won't, we shouldn't get on the logistics of how that is. But the theme is just exactly, we'll write down toolkit, communication, visibility, we'll get there, right? But I, but I understand where you want to go. I, I know exactly. It's really basically what I need. You know, when I go out, I do it individually prep, but I've been in business for a while, so I can drag this stuff kind of, you know, out of the air sometimes, and sometimes I can't, you know, so you need expertise to, to help you along. So we'll work on that. I think there's some really good ideas that. Are you, were, any others that you think? So you've covered your bases?
I'm just wondering if that ties into, and I don't know if this would be the appropriate place either, but to really have that continuing ed for all board members, not only as a trustee, but also continuing education about what's happening at the college. I always find when I walk in the room, I got to, you know, look at my notes, past meetings and kind of re-familiarize myself with things. Granted, I, I'm new and I give myself a little leeway there, but at times I, I look at and go, wow, I should know this and I don't. So it would be really great to somehow, and I don't know if this is appropriate for a board goal, to have that somehow included. That trustees will have continuing ed and not only as a trustee, but also facts about the college and what's happening.
I think it could tie in just with the toolkit, familiarizing ourselves with the, the toolkit that's involved.
I think, I think your goal around professional development and training, it's similar to what I would construct for my cabinet or they for their deans or faculty, right? You don't expect faculty just to not stay current, you know, so it's the same thing. So we can construct something like that for you. It talks about training, professional development. And then when it come, when it's budget time, which, and you still have a little bit of leeway, but you, right now, and we have budgeted for you to, to go to those things. Strategically going to stuff is probably different than going, right? So sometimes I'm curious about, you know, you know, traveling a long way for a very short amount of information, you know, what, you know, not you all. I mean, you know, so I scrutinize those things. So there better be a win for the institution. If we're going to spend four thousand, you know, how is it that that's going to reflect back on the, on student success somehow or leadership? Are we pretty good? Do you think? You want another one?
Good. I don't know if we need to develop a committee per se. I think, so my understanding is that you guys would work with.
Yeah, right now you would be that committee. So, yeah.
We could work something out in that August meeting, right, and adopt them, right, I'm sure?
If you want, um, a good suggestion would be, if you have, if there's energy on the board of, of a couple of you who, as we shape them up, I can run them past you. That's, that's, it's better use of your time and everything else because at least you would have a look.
Uh, you? Trustee Goff and Baker, New, two, three?
That's great. Yeah. If you get more than that, we're into another special, right? Yeah.
Trustee Baker, trustee Goff and trustee Segarra.
Perfect. All right. So we'll start forwarding you the, the, our working notes as kind of a working group. And we can use some kind of a, either Google Docs or some other kind of something that works for us. Awesome. Wonderful. Well, thank you, Board.
Committee.
Yeah. I think job well done. I mean, from my, my perspective, this is a good, solid conversation. Certainly one that we haven't had in a while, and I think it's good. So we'll, I'm looking forward to, you know, coming back to you next time and hopefully this will be adopted. We'll, we'll do a, I don't think we're coming in for a first read, second read on these, but we could certainly adapt them real time. And we may want to start our next meeting with something very similar to this. I'm not quite sure, but it will certainly be an agenda item. Thank you for, thank you for that. I'm done with this item.
Thank you. Yeah, Michael, if you're still up, I hope you're having a nice glass of wine.
Yeah.
So at this point, we're moving on to four point one. This is closed session items. At this time, the board will devote a total of up to fifteen minutes for comments to the board of trustees. Regarding closed session agenda items, individuals will be limited to a five-minute presentation. Right now, we have the public employee evaluation and goal setting. Do I have any speakers out there? So I'm going to open and close public comment, and we're going to adjourn to closed session at five thirty-eight. Since I don't have any speaker cards, is there anyone out in the hall? Would you like to say anything? Perfect. Thank you. So I'm going to open and close public comment. We're going to move to reports. This is item eight point one, academic senate report. I do not see. Academic senate report, Eileen Tejada. I do not see her. So we're going to eight point two, administrative confidential senate report. I do not see Robert Harris.
Bob, Bob sent his regrets. He's, he's away on assignment.
All right. Eight point three, associated students in the Napa Valley College report. I do not see Christopher. Eight point four, classified association report, Valerie Moll.
Yay.
Got one.
Thank you. And it's short and sweet. I wanted to give everyone an update on the placement of classified staff members from the Child Development Center. And we're happy to announce that all ten classified staff members that were affected by the change in operations with, in COE have been placed in positions across campus, and they'll be starting on August first. I'm also happy to report that seven of those ten have been assigned to Student Affairs. So we're going to do our best in this unit to make this a positive transition for them. And I'd also like to welcome our new hires. We have Morgan Knight, Instructional Support Specialist in the Writing Success Center. Arias Marco, Senior Accountant in the Business Office. And Austin Bradway will be starting next month as a Campus Service Officer. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Valerie, and I know the board was concerned that everybody was going to be placed, so that's very good to hear. Next, eight point five, classified senate report. This is Mr. Martin Shoemaker. I do not see him. And next, Facility Association Report, eight point six. I do not see Kristi Romoto. And next, we'll go to Dr. Kraft, President's Report, eight point seven.
Thank you. A couple of things. You'll, you'll see, um, my reporters, we have some other informational items tonight, so there's not too much on here. Similar to Valerie's, there's a NBC childcare update. The PIO's office, Holly released another letter, I think Holly, did that go out today, or will it go out to parents? Okay, um, so I'll say for the record, and we distributed another letter, follow-up letter, to parents, just letting them know the, the process and what's going on. And Valerie, good news, Oscar's excited about that, and we are too. I think we're getting some great, great employees across the district and excited about seeing them in new roles. So. California State Budget, signed by Governor Newsom, includes five notable expenditures for Cal, Cal Colleges. This, um, second year of free tuition to first-time college students and local college promises, we, we talked through a little bit. There is great energy still in the legislature and the, and the governor, and more so there than at the chancellor's office level and the CEO level. As I said, there, people are really trying to figure out the best way to use these funds. And, and we're all on the same page of wanting to encourage student success and getting people here and feeling that the least, a reason that you should, that you should, you should not attend, no, let me do this differently. One of the reasons that you should not be barred is just your economic ability to get into the college. So we're, we're working together as a unit, all the CEOs, to see if we can create pathways for more successful promise students, and that's really a deeper conversation across. And update on state legislation, Holly put this together, but two bills, AB thirty, College and Career Access Pathways, and AB six twelve, increasing the CalFresh restaurant meals and programs passed out of their policy. Of note is the last one, last line in here, I submitted a letter to the Senate Education and Senate Judiciary sharing concerns about AB three oh two. This is the bill that mandates college districts permit students to sleep in their cars in our parking lots. We, we all recognize the problem. What we did is suggest some amendments to the language that would be manageable from the individual sites. So legislature is working on something that's general, but there are individual site issues. How do we do that? How do we accomplish that? That, that we want to make sure are in the bill. So we'll, we'll see. It's, it's working its way through. We, um, thank you. I, I've got a little quick note here in terms of participation in the July fourth parade. The, the college did very well. It was, I think, about forty folks in the, in the parade, including your, your president and myself, and lots of, lots of good things. Who else was, Rosada was in there. Other, other paradeers were around, right? And, and we all followed El Jefe Grand Marshall, Oscar DeJaro, who was this year's grand marshal, which is very fun, very fun. And I liked your outfit. It was pretty spiffy looking. So, um, another, another way that we kind of go out. Actually, Napa's parade is increasing in importance. It, it used to be pretty modest, I would say. Yeah, thank you. I was looking for the right word. But it, it's increasing. I mean, there were thousands of people really lined up. And, and I think that it's starting to get its, its legs as a, as a legit parade. So I was, I was happy, very happy to be a participant. So that is the President's Report at this time.
Thank you. A lot of good stuff. Nine point one, approval of minutes. This is the minutes from our June thirteenth, nineteen regular meeting proposed. I have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second? I have a motion by trustee Baker and a second by trustee Goff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of minutes passed, unanimous. Consent calendar, ten point one. Any items wanting to be polled, discussed?
Well, consent calendar?
A motion by trustee Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by trustee Dodd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Next, we are moving to Academic Affairs Information Discussion Items. This is the eleven point one, result to the Faculty Chair Elections. Interim Vice President Fay Smiley, welcome.
Yes, welcome. I'd like to welcome officially Fay to her first board meeting, who's sat in this chair before. And so some of you remember, and she was named the interim vice president for this year. Very excited about Fay joining Cabinet and being here. So, welcome.
Thank you very much. I look forward to being here, and I've worked with many of you before, and I look forward to doing that again. And for those of you that I don't know, I look forward to getting to know you. So thank you.
Thank you. And this is an action item. So the results of the elections, I'm sure you guys all read. Science and Engineering Division, that's Dr. Stephen Paul. Mathematics Department for Professor Shawna Binham.
Binham.
Binham. Thank you. Counseling Division, Professor Angie Moore. All those in, or do I have a motion? Sorry. Trustee Pablo has made a motion.
Leon.
And trustee Rios has made the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Next, we're moving to twelve point one. This is Administrative Services Reorganization. I think Catherine, you're going to open a document for us. This is an action item to endorse the reorganization of Administrative Services. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Parker to go over this.
So just very quickly, at the April board meeting, you saw reorganizations for the other three areas of the college. Administrative Services was not part of that presentation, and so tonight, what you see is the proposed reorganization for Administrative Services. At a very high level, it's still the same three divisions. It's still the same three directors of those divisions. There are a few title changes as a result of the Administrative Confidential Classification and Compensation Review that took place. Perhaps the, or not perhaps, definitely the biggest change here is the proposal for the Business and Finance Org, Office. And the organization chart that you see here is dividing Business and Finance into three areas, payroll, accounting, and purchasing. And so a couple of the positions were approved in this year's budget. That is moving our Chief Accountant to a Senior Manager of Accounting and adding a Business Office Assistant to the Accounting Area. We're proposing and will be putting in our budget proposal when it comes time to look at twenty twenty-one to add an Administrative Assistant for the Controller. The Controller doesn't currently have an Admin Assistant. And to create the position of Senior Manager of Purchasing so that we would have an actual procurement department. We don't currently have anyone who is advocating on behalf of the district with vendors for negotiating better rates or investigating additional sources for the district. And so it's an area that we've been lacking in, in the Business and Finance Office. Moving on to the Facilities Department, there was one change that took place this year, the year that just ended, and that was the hiring of an Assistant Director of Facility Services. And so now all of the custodians and groundskeepers report to that person. The building mechanics continue to report to our Senior Director of Facility Services. We're not proposing any additional changes to Facility Services at this time. This is the first time in the three and a half years that I've been with the district that we have all of our positions filled in Facility Services, and so we are seeing definite improvements in the Facility Services area with being fully staffed. And then finally, looking at institutional technology. Only new posi, one new position was approved for this year, and that was an Audiovisual Technician. We'll be requesting in the budget cycle for twenty twenty-one, an additional position of Senior Administrative Assistant in the Institutional Technology Area. Currently, the Director of Institutional Technology is supported by one of the Technology Technicians. So the Technology Technician is wearing two hats. She actually maintains the Director's Calendar and processes the purchasing requisitions for that department, as well as providing support for technology in general. And so with the addition of an Administrative Assistant, it will allow the Technology Technician to do what she was hired to do, which is to provide technology support. So those are the proposed changes that we're looking to make in Administrative Services moving forward throughout this year and next year.
Question?
I'm just curious, are the job descriptions online?
The job descriptions, I know that the HR Department has been working on all of those new job descriptions. I'm sorry, I'm looking at you because I know, I know they've been working at least for the classified positions with, with the Classified Union. I don't believe, however, that the I don't believe, however, that the updated job descriptions are currently online. I believe the goal is to have them online as soon as possible, hopefully before the end of the summer.
I just ask because you've got audiovisual assistant, audiovisual technician, audiovisual specialist. And I'm like, what's the difference between those three?
It has to do with, not just the fact that they are paid at different ranges, but it also has to do with their skills, the skill set that's required for those positions. The other thing I will say is that part of the classification and compensation study, certainly in both the classified staff as well as in Administrative Confidential, was a desire to create career ladders. And so what you see here is truly, in terms of audiovisual, that career ladder. The entry level would be the assistant. The next level would be the technician. And then the highest level, at this point, would be the specialist.
Any question? You have that, the controller position is vacant right now?
Yes.
Are you in the process of filling that, or?
Yes, we are. So first of all, we have appointed, our chief accountant, Wendy Newco, has been appointed the interim controller to fill in, in the controller's absence. We also have, the position is posted. A committee is forming, and we expect to do our first review of applications within the next two weeks.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion by trustee Segura. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by trustee Goff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parker, 12.2, we polled. And Erica, are you okay to? We're getting close. Are you good? Right. So 12.2 polled. Human resources, we don't have anything. Student affairs, nothing for general information. So 15.1, District and Campus Master Plan. This is our DCMP and Dr. Kraft.
Thank you. Just an update in terms of. Oh, yeah, we will. Thank you. There's a little bit of update that we may pass out a little bit, some language verbiage, really. Just a reminder, really, of the definition of the DCMP. The District and Campus Master Plan has been an ongoing document and study and development for the last few years. The need for a District and Campus Master Plan has become apparent to us all. And I think making decisions as you're moving through identifies the planning and design principles, objectives for long-term property development of the district. It also assumes a couple of things that I want to just draw your attention to, if you'll take a look at this. We've got, I'm misspelling, but that's okay. We have a long-term, this is a long-term document. It is really a 2020 to 2030. So we're really looking at something that the community members, based on our workshop earlier. This is something that the community would be engaged in, but also a highly visible picture of what you intend and all of our constituencies intend for the college moving forward. It becomes, in some ways, the template for facilities, programs, and everything else as you move forward. And we have several things on the board and the docket, the agenda to discuss as we're moving forward. Several projects have come our way in the last few years to examine. There's a report tonight, again, on another project that, you know, you'll hear a little bit about. So, it is a flexible living document. There's no way that this board, even in its great wisdom, could establish something that, over ten years. I think the community will change enough over the next decade or so. So, it's a reasonable timeframe, I think, that feels good. The plan is a series of narrative, as you can see up there, visual illustrations and land use maps. So, it's not dissimilar from something you would look at from any other major complex, and how it might change over a period of years, how a building would be replaced by another building, or a new building might be intended to be built, based on what we know, the kind of infrastructure and land use. A comprehensive webpage with information and resources will be behind this piece. And a final document draws upon the previous documents. By that, I mean, there's been a lot. I think we probably have two big cardboard boxes, maybe more, of planning documents that have been amassed at the college. Everything from carbon, you know, two-spaced, typed on an old typewriter, all the way through modern layouts that we have now. Sorting through those is important in terms of trying to establish maybe the context of what previous boards wanted. And in fact, some of the things that you're considering in Mount Vider were pointed out as objectives in 1986 by that board, and they wanted to move forward. Who knows why they didn't? But I mean, some of it is just that. I mean, you know, rather than coming up with individual discrete projects, having some holistic, comprehensive piece will be a good thing for us this year to move forward. Campus and community engagement, it's really important. Some of this, as I've stated before, unbuilt, let me just say that land that is now vacant is really the board's call. And there is no shared governance issues in that. There's no curriculum issues in that. There's no, it is purely your call. However, and that's a great big however in caps, right? With a semicolon, it's really critical that we work with all the constituencies. We don't really want to do something that is so antithetical to the mission of what we got going, or seems so out of the ordinary of what we got going. So, the governance process, the Board of Trustees and Real Property Subcommittee, very appropriate. And you'll see tonight that things, the Real Property Subcommittee is a wonderful place in order to vet ideas, bring it to the board for information. Council of Presidents, you know, is a governance group where all of the representatives from this table, who are not here tonight, but Valerie's here, will get a chance to check in, including the students. The Facilities and Budget Committee is a great stop along the way, because that's a shared governance committee. Facilities Committee is a district committee, but also key in this. And then college stakeholder groups. This is where I think it's going to be very important to check in with the senates themselves, and then just other stakeholders on campus who really care. You know, individuals who work with us. And then community advisory and stakeholder groups as well. So we don't want to do this in a vacuum. If you were looking at any major university, you can imagine any major university that wants to do big project, you can bet they've drawn a line around the university, at least out a few miles, and they're going to check with their neighbors and the businesses and anything else it might impact. The last thing you want to do is create new roads that completely eliminate somebody's livelihood because you created a left turn that's no longer possible for people to get into something that used to happen. So, just those, all the way down to that logistic, all the way up to big, our good neighbor policy. We have a lot of laws that we have to adhere to and comply with. So, that's really it. We have, we've appointed a DCMP coordinating work group, which is really Catherine is executive coordinator, cabinet members, senior dean of research. Somebody's got to do this work. And so, we really are amassing this. So, I decided that Catherine would be the person that would do all this work, right? And with some help, we certainly want. So we have good teams here. It doesn't mean that this team meets in secret, or, you know, they're just the coordinating group. I thought it'd be better to have somebody that people can go to. And kind of a path, anticipated timeline. Here we are, summer. We're compiling all these existing materials. The conference room in the president's office is a large table, for those who haven't been back there. And the path forward is to lay out all of these cardboard boxes, documents, in their respective piles, and try to coordinate what we know, where we're going with all of the next pile of materials, which are things that are happening right now. So, outside of the city and county, the general and master plans, all those things really, really play. The Kennedy Park Master Plan, as well as the supervisors. So, that will happen summer. Fall preliminary draft goes out to our constituents and governance review. Back to this group that we just talked about. I want to make sure that that draft is seen a lot, comes back for revisions, and you forgot this, or how come you made this leap, that kind of thing. Spring, this coming spring, a comprehensive report, final review, and kind of comes in for the board to take a look at. And also, based on the preliminary draft assessment, you know, faculty, staff, and all those folks doing it, that should be a fairly solid document. The webpage should start to take on some shape here. And then late spring, we'll, I'll bring it back to you. You should be apprised at that time that this has been vetted. The boardroom should not be packed with people who are feeling outraged at this thing because we have worked it through a shared governance process. This is a big piece of business, and I think an important one for you as a board. This is a legacy piece for you. And so, you know, you're at least laying it out for the next ten years of how you believe it should work forward. Yes, Joe?
Are we going to be working with any sort of consultants? Or do we have anybody engaged already?
Yeah, no. Yes, the answer is yes. We'll be working with consultants. We are for sure working with, for example, a utilization study consultant. We have other consultants that are coming in on FMP. There's updates that we need, and I think just having other eyes on it would be good. You know, that would be the good thing. So, other questions? Yeah? So, you know, if we're sitting here, again, fast forward, next, you know, summer, you should have this behind us feel very good, and you'll kind of know that the community is very aware, hopefully, of what the college wants to do. But my caveat to us is they're not going to know, right? So we've agreed with a lot of input. And then our job now is to go out and let people know clearly where we're moving to, what we're doing. So along the way, we'll try to do our best. But what I don't want to do is communicate this to a broad audience as we're developing it, because they land on an idea that is, you know, I thought you weren't going to do the Indian casino, or kind of a thing, you know? Yeah, just a joke. We're not doing Howard and India Casino. Yes, okay. That's it. Any other questions on this? Yes?
I have a question. Would this document include the next two items?
It would. There's some subsets.
Just the proposed, kind of, this is what it looks like at this moment in time.
Yes.
Okay.
And to your point, the next two items are housing and also the sports complex. I'm going to address that because I'm not quite sure what to call it. Yeah. But had a previous board addressed this, and you are working from a DCMP now, it may well be that there would have been a square that said future housing, or a whole section of the college that said future development, you know, or open for development, or whatever it might be. So, we would be working from that document. What we want, what I want to make sure, as we develop this college, which is in some ways very visible to everyone, right? Because of our site location, is that we have, our aesthetic design is off the charts. That it's a beautiful campus, that it's pleasing. Above all, it is open and accessible for learning and student success. And we have to keep our eyes, you know, kind of crystallized on that. So, it's inviting, it makes sense. It's somewhere that you and I would want, you know, to go to or send our loved ones to. And that's really the goal. And at the end of the day, we're doing all the things that support student success.
I'm assuming that the consultants that you referred to are the ones who will tell you, gee, that actually makes sense, or legally we could do that, correct?
Yes.
It looks like we possibly could do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And in some of the projects that we're talking about, and we've alluded to it, and we'll get a little bit to it, and, you know, there are steeper hurdles. I mean, you have to do environmental impact reports, but, you know, on this document, will not call out those yet. It will include, though, I assume, you know, this is my assumption, right? Until you codify that we're moving forward on housing, it will include student housing and a section in there. And there will be consultants that we would engage in that process. There will also be subsequent kind of pieces that we would be looking at. There's technology that's associated with these decisions, financial decisions, you know, those infrastructure decisions. There could be bond, you know, there could be other kinds of financial structures, you know, whatever it might be. So it is a far-reaching something. On a micro scale, this is you with your three acres, or two acres, or a half acre, designing your home and saying, this is what I want it to look like over a period of years as we grow, you know, taking it, you know, at least from now, ten years out. And so you have to kind of thoughtfully plan on that, and you better be careful that you include your neighbors and still focus on your mission. Yes, Joe?
Can you remind us, what the utilization study that's ongoing, I think, right now?
Yeah.
And when is that going to be ready?
Bob might be able to best address that.
So, the work is being done, and has been done internally to gather information. The Facilities Committee is compiling at their next meeting, compiling that information. We would then engage someone, an outside consultant, to help us evaluate and interpret what we've discovered. And so we're looking to have some product available by the fall.
And then the purpose of that is to see how we best utilize facilities right now, or how better could we utilize facilities?
Both of those things, yes, yes.
That will be, the utilization study will be a strong underlying document to help inform our decision and structure. It has, it has everything to do with these constituents along here. Because we're really talking about utilization of our core academic buildings right now and support buildings. So, I would want to involve, and I think you would insist, right? That we would involve faculty in major decisions where we're going to, you know, remodel, or change, or repurpose, or something else, because it's a domino effect. So we want to make sure that we're using things in the highest and best appreciation, along with being prudent and responsible to the community. We have some beautiful facilities here, and it's at least my belief as president, and I think cabinet certainly, and most people on campus, that we need to use our existing facilities to the highest and best. And then when we're ready to improve those, or modify those, or indeed add, then we can go out to the community in a way that is credible.
Something that I think, I know I would find helpful, and I would assume other people as well, especially in the community. We have a lot of different documents and things that have MP at the end of their acronym. And so, we've got the Educational Master Plan, we've got the Facilities Master Plan, we've got this one now. It's like, it would be nice to have something that really articulated how those things nest and how they don't. And, you know, what's the various processes that, how they're developed, where do they go? Who, you know, so when we're making a decision that is affected by one of them, or will affect one of these, we make certain that we're transparent about how it went through all the correct checks and balances.
I love that. And I know just the dean, I won't mention her name more than all, that, I think Robin would be excellent at this, at creating a matrix that would say, these are master plans, this is that process. These are subplans. These are some things that we don't want to call plans, but kind of are plans, you know, and it can be very confusing. I think we have the big five. This is an extra one that's kind of added in, so I'm with you. We need to articulate those in a way that makes sense. I'll make sure we capture that, and we can roll together on that.
Anyone else? All right. I think you're staying up there because we're moving to 15.2. This is our housing update. And again, I just want to remind everybody that we do have our special meeting on this in August, on the 22nd. So, we'll be taking a deeper dive then. But, Dr. Kraft, this is our housing update.
I'm waiting till, can I touch now? Okay, good. Um, yeah. Don't be touching that. Housing update, I, we've been working on housing, again, for a number of years. And the concept was, again, you know, kind of emergent out of the eighties. And it was based on, at that time, a much smaller campus, you know, in terms of our footprint. And it's come up, you know, over every decade or so. And as we discussed, I think the timing is right now for the community to start looking at this. This was a presentation I presented, and trustee Dodd was there to the, to a group of Napa leaders. And I wanted to, I'm not going to drag you through this whole thing, yes?
Can I, before you go, because you made one good comment before you started off that presentation, that that initial slide was not anything, this was just an idea, not designed by any- this was just an idea, not designed by anything with any sort of purpose?
Yes.
This is not, this is just a picture.
This is not my fantasy of what it might look like, but then again, you know, this is, this is a pretty typical, this is a real student housing project. A lot of the student housing projects that are kind of emerging tend to look like this. And we have made a couple of decisions along the line here with some deep staff in conversation in terms of, you know, with consultants and with vendors and with other folks to, and with you all, to think more in terms of what might be a more flexible or appropriate kind of development for our students, which are more apartment-like than dorm-like, if you will. And allowing us a bit more flexibility. Just as an aside or as a piece of this, I double-checked this, you know, with other CEOs who were, there were only two in the cohort that I was with at Davis. But they're, they're, they're moving this direction. They, they agreed, you know, in terms of their background that for Napa's kind of unique profile, that we're moving in the right direction. Everybody's very interested. And again, I've said this before, I believe within a decade, you're, you're going to find that we are joined with student housing from many institutions. It just makes more sense, you know, for them. Okay, so thank you. High cost of local housing, I won't land on it, we have talked about this. This really was an overview piece that we have talked about before. I think it's clear that housing is going up. By way of analogy, the last check that I did, which was last week, a studio, a studio in Napa ranges from a very low 1,300 to a moderate 1,800 right now. And that's high, right? A one-bedroom is anywhere from six on the low side, 600 a month, to 850 or nine with kitchen rights or other kinds of rights. And so, needless to say, it's, it's an expensive place to live. Housing priorities, these were established through long conversation with the board primarily and then double-check with our constituencies. Affordable quality on-campus living, recruitment, retention, promote more diverse population, campus engagement. Integration with the community is another, another piece we talked about. Also, I think what we're, there are some other pieces here. Support recruitment and retention can, can work both ways, both for faculty if we decide to move that direction, but also bringing other students in. There isn't, there isn't hard evidence yet for us to say that if we build student housing, students would enroll in more units. But qualitatively, I think the data shows that other institutions, that's, that's what they do. The drive time is eliminated for those students, the convenience factor goes up higher. So, they tend to take another class and maybe, maybe more. So, there is some good possibility there. Our mission, the board in 210, you know, kind of affirmed the mission. We went back to this and we had some really good conversations at the beginning of this, I would say three years ago, Faye, maybe. You know, with faculty, some faculty members felt that this was a departure, especially, you know, senior faculty members. This is not in the mission of California, we are commuter college. We need to remain a drive-on, drive-off college. And there's nothing wrong with that at all. But, but the world has changed in the last four or five years. And we started to look at our mission to say that maybe being residential, you know, with all the things that it brings with it is worth, worth a trade-off if we can better serve our students. So, it is in our mission, I think we're all in agreement there. These are some other things we talked about, comfortable, clean, opportunities for students, healthy life, work, play for students. If we decide to go with a campus village, employee piece, it's a live, work, play kind of environment. Student housing is what we'll land on for a bit. These are improved, persistence and retention rates do increase and that just goes with, I'm, I was thinking about, what do I want to share here? I was thinking about working out this morning and that's as far as I got. And, you know, and it's, I think this happens in terms of student persistence or success. I mean, you can't miss very many classes in science or chem. Try missing a few in Ochem and trying to pass something, it just doesn't happen for you. So, you know, having students, I, I believe the students who live on campus are going to do better. I think the, the data tends to support that, but it's, we're using university data primarily, oops, sorry. Using, how do I get out of there? I just have to click on something, anything, you click, there we go. The, the data supports it in universities and I think the community colleges that have housing are, are trying to research this. I think it's going to be fine. Campus pride, community engagement, sense of belonging, we talked about. The student housing at community colleges, it's increasing across the US, a quarter of them. A quarter of the thousand have housing, it will continue to go up. On the right-hand side, I think when we first started talking about this, I'm, I'm looking at Raphael and I think there was maybe seven or eight at the time, we, you know, I can't remember to tell you the truth, you know, but, but I can see, this, this is chatter that's in the system. And people are really interested in this, this. As much as they're interested in food insecurity and doing their, and doing their, you know, their food basket or whatever it might be called at their institution. They're also very intensely interested in student housing and how that might, might secure the ability of students to live on campus, to, to secure housing, especially in our area. Orange Coast, 300, we've talked about them, 323 units, they're going to do 800 beds, this is phase one of Orange Coast. Santa Rosa is breaking ground on, soon, they're still, they're not there yet, they're just about the same place we are. I would say a couple of months, maybe the same place, a couple of months advanced. 360 beds, 230 units, this is not too different than what we've been tossing around for our, you know, our stuff. This is again, an architectural character, I don't think that that's, you know, what would, what would be. Our student survey came back very strong, as you remember, 679 respondents, 53 considered it, you know, to be reasonable. Campus Village is a more of a question, it, it came along, we addressed this together early on. We had the concept, we didn't really know very much about student housing or faculty housing a couple of years ago. So, we decided that we would explore as the best we could and maybe even start and finish a student housing complex and see how it went. And then think about faculty housing. Well, the demand stir in the community, the reaction of the community in terms of, you know, faculty housing or workforce housing is really ramped up. So, it started to reignite this. We also, as we got deeper into consultative conversations, recognized that some of the things we'd have to do just for one project, we'd have to do for the other project. So, if we were going to do a, help me Jeff, what am I going to do here? Not going to do an EIR, or am I, all right? Some assessment, whatever the assessments might be, if we were looking at the same property out there, then, you know, I do know that the, that where we're intending at least, thank you, to build student housing, which is in MOLA and 221 is high, higher than it needs to be. So, it will be bladed, that dirt likely is going to go into the lower section that happens to be where Campus Village might go or some other development may go, right? So, it, we're going to have to pull different kinds of descriptors as we start to work through it a little bit. It doesn't mean, and I don't, and I want to make sure that this is clear, I, we are ahead. If this were a, a start, not a race, but just a start, student housing is clearly ahead of the Campus Village. But there's some synergies in dealing with both, you know, feasibility, I think we caught up a little bit. There's certainly no design element here, there's not even an agreement, I think, on the board yet on Campus Village and what that might look like. We certainly have a lot of constituent work to do. So, it's coming along, but it's, it's something that's less definitive, if you will. These are some faculty-staff pieces, recruitment, desirable location, if we did it, we have an ideal place for it, there's no, no doubt in that. Survey of faculty and staff came in very strong, NBC staff, 41 considered it, another 41 considered if it were offered, which makes sense. People don't like the, any of the approaches to the, to the college, whatever direction you're coming from, you know, is, is a traffic snarl. So, it would reduce some of that. We also went out to NVUSD and surprisingly, their, their responses came even higher. 58% said yes, they would consider living, 32 said maybe. So, you know, whopping 90% of their, of those respondents said yes. I mean, if you were to get this in any other kind of survey, you know, I'd love to see these responses on some other measures. 75% is difficult to find an affordable place to live, well, we know that. 89 said housing options will be important in attracting them. I think that board, this is, you know, board to board. You having, and me having an interior conversation that's singular to our college in this conversation with NVUSD shouldn't happen. We, we, we need to involve their board, you know, a subcommittee of this group needs to go to their board and talk about, talk about this. If we're going to move forward on this, learn what's important for them and vice versa. I think that would be something that, that I can certainly do at the president level and I've reached out to Roseanne and we've met. But I don't have a sense of their board and, and we're still kind of working it out. So, it's something that I would suggest that we do. The parameters for faculty and staff, educators, non-owners of residential property. You don't want people moving from their houses, renting them out at 7,000 and then living in these houses. So, you know, that's, that defeats the purpose. And they're transitional, I mean, there's no intention of, of getting a faculty or staff person in a, in something that they're going to stay there for 30 years. There are projects like that in the state where you stay as long as you are employed. And, but they have much more capability to build, if you will. Other colleges, you know, there's, there's several around, College of San Mateo was probably more ahead. They have three different colleges with three different faculty-staff complexes going. Skyline College, Cabrillo and Santa Barbara are working on their, on theirs now. I had a meeting set with Santa Barbara, but they, she, she missed the, the meeting that we had, but I'll, I'll catch up on these two. So, they're moving forward on this. K-12s are ahead of us on this, they're much more aggressive. And they, and they have more possibilities because they have different kind of grant possibilities in their constituent areas. So, Bay areas, if you start to look in the Bay area, there are some secondaries that are working. Benefits to the community are these things, I'm sorry, I did it again. Reduced pressure on housing stock, mitigated traffic is probably a big one. You have people commuting less time, traffic off the streets. Economic impact, faculty, staff and students living on our campus are going to spend money here locally. You know, if you live in Solano or Fairfield or some other place, you might go to, I don't know, I've forgotten, the movie theater's over on Eight. You know, a little west of here, right, but some people, or, you know, some of those other, what is it? Yeah, well, I'm trying to think what it is, whatever it is. I mean, if you live here, chances are you're going to spend here, you're going to go to these movies, right? You're going to eat here and shop here and do whatever you can. Sustainability issues are really important. Our Green Belt project is moving along, you'll see that show up in the DCMP and live, work and shop piece. And then we coordinate with those other, other stuff. Located, now this is a map, so we have other kinds of presentations here. This is again, just a presentation so far. So, where we have identified for the students is that right-hand side up there. It, it looks good. What you see there as a drawing was done as a conceptual drawing back in 14 or 15, Catherine's telling me, back in 15. So, and that was ideas and that document back in 15 just laid out ideas. So, I don't think we're going to learn anything that's going to be objectionable about the student housing site. We have to uncover stuff, but from, I understand from my conversations with Bob and Matt, Christiansen, that that site has most of the infrastructure that we would need or it's available pretty close. So, there's, our building costs there are reasonable and, you know, no real red flags. Above the word student, where you're looking at is a, is a one-acre identified parcel, we call it Area One, all right? And that's still trying to develop that area up there. Could be for retail, it's a little small, it could be for interaction if it works. We have some issues, we're right there on the street, however, so is the mobile station across the street. So, it also has the potential to be used for college outreach, informational places. It could, it could be the welcome center for the college for enrollment, there's a lot of things it could be, you know, so a lot of options. The Tulaket Creek in the center is our Green Belt and we may not kind of touch that, we're going to enhance that area. There's a lot, it's a riparian corridor, we have some, some species issues in there. And, and to be frank, it's a, it's a draw of the college. It's a beautiful walkway, it's not yet as fully used as it could be. But in the future, the future that I see in some of the DCMP, this is going to be a wonderful area to, to take a look at. Implementation strategies, we landed on nonprofit foundation, tax-exempt model. Bob can unpack this and we're going to talk about this in, at August. So, one of the, the major piece in August that we'll be talking about is this 501(c)(3) development and tax. Developer earns development fee but has no ownership, college a third party manages the property, college limits the risk and debt capacity impact. So, really what we're, what we're talking about is this kind of model where the college is not using any, any local funds, if you will. It's state-derived funds that are sold on the open market in a tax-free muni bond piece. I'm not sure I did that completely right, Bob, but close enough, right? Thank you, thank you. The, the benefits of this, the reason we landed on this, rather than going the other direction, is we get to, in this version, describe who we want as our renters. So, we can describe the college affiliation folks, which would be students, faculty and staff, and we get to do that. Otherwise, we fall underneath fair housing and you have very little control over who could move in or who would be there. And that's not, I don't think we, I don't think anybody's intent was to build an apartment complex and see whether we could make money. It, it's really about, you know, staying in our mission. So, it really did drive us to this very specific kind of funding piece and we certainly explored the rest. This is more, more deep for you and you're welcome to go back to this, but I don't want to go through all of this. We're going to do this next month for you, just as a deeper dive. But the college, the number one here, college leases the land to the 501(c)(3) borrower. That 501(c)(3) stays in the picture the entire 30 years. They are, they, they are the connector, they make, ensure things, people, they, they look at the audit, they pay the taxes, they stay in for a fee, right? That fee is amortized over the life of the project, which is generally 30 years. And then the project comes back to the college completely, as we've talked about, and the land lease is done. Very, very well-understood and highly-used structure for college development. It addresses the initial constituency shared governance issues. If you're going to build this board or, or Mr. President, is it coming out of district funds? And will it mean that we have, we have less to work with here as a college? And so, we landed on the 501(c)(3), which is, the answer is no, it's not coming out of district funds. Unless a few things happen, we go partially way through when we pull the plug somehow, then we have some costs to cover. But that all comes out in the pre-agreement that you'll see in August as well. Elements, I'm not going to go through these either. Catherine's been working on an NBC housing webpage, which is live, you can take a look, we're updating it as we go. Q and A's, you know, FAQs on here, some plans and some, you know, maybe, is this, this PowerPoint going to be on there as well, do we know? Maybe, right? Yeah, we don't overload it, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, is it, I think it's on, is this on Board Docs? Okay, yeah, it's on Board Docs, yeah, thank you. We had some corrections to this, that's why we didn't post it, it was, it was for a different audience. So, when it was originally developed, this PowerPoint, so we shifted it a little bit. Project timeline, next steps, August 8th, presentation on financing and other key points. I expect to have a, a financial group here, not necessarily the end, the, the choice, but certainly a good representative of that. I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, I'm not sure that I've oriented this with Bob, but we'll see, you know, how, how we go. In any case, we'll have a deeper presentation on the 501(c)(3), so you fully understand that. August 12th, you should receive a, August 8th is our meeting, our regular meeting. The 12th, you'll get a distribution of a package that would hopefully give you a good 10- The twelfth, you'll get a distribution of a package that would hopefully give you a, a good ten days to study for the special meeting coming up on the twenty-second, more a deep dive. And we'll have some more, um, pre-development, pre-agreement documents in there for you to look at, some study background pieces. And on August twenty and twenty-first, we're doing campus forums here, kind of open call forums. We're moving forward to gather information on student housing. This is gonna go to the board, um, very soon, like within a few days, that kind of language. So, come in and weigh in. The, the obvious questions here is, you know, once the board says, you know, thumbs up on the twenty-second, does that mean, you know, this is not like a parachute jump? I mean, you, you know, we have, it's more like an airplane, and you can land it again, and, and it's not, it's, there are opportunities, benchmarked opportunities, we can stop this process, depending on what you hit. You have to, as a board, you'll have to cover costs that we incur, and, and that, that we'll have to split or recover, or somebody would have to recover. I don't, that's just good business to kind of build that in and think about it. We don't anticipate that. But, we won't have everything. There would be people coming back in August. I intentionally delayed this, as you know, to make sure that faculty and staff could be on campus and have some input. I went to Senate, as you remem-, as you remember, back in May, early May, I believe, I think, and presented just these dates and ensured then that the board would not move forward. On the, on the eighth, that we were doing a special, um, board meeting, so they could, they could come in and talk to you. And I would expect, I would hope, in fact, that we have constituents at that meeting to, to talk to you about pro or con, however it might be. Questions?
We are gonna have a special meeting on it, so.
I'm just curious about the, um, the campus forums. Is, is that gonna be open to students as well?
Yes.
Is it open to anyone?
Yeah, I don't think that, um, it is, they're gonna be open. Well, I, I guess I'm looking at Holly and Catherine. We're developing the timelines, and we'll try to do, we'll probably have maybe more than one time during those, during those sessions. I'm happy to be there the entire time. It'll be Bob and I, or somebody covering it, or Oscar's cabinet, um, the best we can. And, um, really try to get to some of the, they're, it's the same questions, you all. I mean, it will be, the hand will go up, and somebody's gonna say, I understand the district's gonna build at their expense, housing. And, and I'm gonna say, no, all right, um, we've answered this. But it's a, it's a reasonable question, because they're not, not everybody's all plugged into these conversations either. So, we're gonna have to continue to reinforce what this looks like. And then some people, I would say, are gonna be all for it. There'd probably be more questions, I would think, from employees about, are you moving forward on campus village? What's that look like? So, we'll have to have more information for you at the, at the August twenty-second meeting too, and maybe some at the eighth. Some, give you more information for decision-making on, on campus village as it's moving forward. Yeah? Just looking.
I would just recommend having pizza at, uh,
Pizza.
At, at these meetings. There was no pizza at the last, at our last, uh, housing forum with, with Cian. There was a little lower, at least in the one I, I attended. I, I heard that helps.
I've had several suggestions, margaritas, pizza, all kinds of stuff.
There you go.
We'll do our best. Yes, I think those, that's good. I'll, uh, you heard it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, okay. Thank you, thank you. We're good.
Thank you. All right, so, next, this is fifteen point three. This is the sports field feasibility study. So, I'm gonna unpack this a little bit, because we do have Eric Housley from FC eighteen thirty-nine, and we wear multitudahats in the community, so. Do wanna give him an opportunity to talk too, but it is on as an action item. This is super preliminary, so I don't want us to get lost in it. But, it's to endorse the consensus recommendation of the Real Property Subcommittee of the Board, that the district cooperate with the North Bay Sports Complex to allow access to district property in order to conduct a feasibility study. So, it's not a big decision. But, so, I'm gonna turn it over to trustee Rafael Rios, who is our chair for the Real Property Committee, and you can give the board a little update on how that went.
Okay, yeah, so, we've met, the committee met on June twenty-fifth with the North Bay Sports Complex Group, which, um, Eric Housley was there with Andy Heliopoulos, and Adam Gisletto was also there that day. So, what they explained to us was, you know, kind of a, um, general outline of, of what they're hoping to do, and we've heard a little bit about it, uh, through different channels. But, uh, at this point, the group has completed a Phase One feasibility study, uh, that basically envisions a sports complex, something like what we had talked about, that the city was trying to do over on Kennedy Park a while back. Um, what they're envisioning and what seems to, their study has revealed that, that there is, um, demand. And, uh, for about thirteen to twenty outdoor fields, courts, and, and four to eight indoor courts for different types of sports, the fields would be multipurpose. The complex would serve, you know, all ages, um, all ages from, uh, kids just, you know, that, coming out for recreation, kind of a park-like setting, to organized sports and sports leagues. And the, uh, tournaments, regional, maybe even national tournaments for sports as, as things develop. The, it's really meant to provide access to everyone. You know, young to old, to all of those, you know, kids growing up. A lot of schools now don't have some sports programs. A lot of, uh, sports programs that aren't really accessible to some kids because of the cost for uniforms and all the other fees that, that they have to pay. And they, they've got, part of their plan is to work in, you know, scholarship, or those kids doing some kind of service, so that if they can't afford those kinds of fees, they, they're not, um, prohibited from playing. That somehow they, they get access, uh, to, to those sports. There's potential here for, you know, economic development for the broader community also with having all these teams coming in to play, uh, tournaments and, and different, the games and everything that's going on. They envision, you know, that, the people, like we see here, people that come to, uh, you know, um, music events and things that stay for the weekend, the whole family comes. And I think there's already some, you know, people who would come in when high schools, there's still a few high schools that are having, like, the basketball tournaments, and sometimes go over two days. Whole family comes in, and so you, you get some economic benefit to the broader community. The, it, it all looks like, you know, it would also assist us in some of the things we've been discussing and trying to fix and provide for college programs for, um, education, uh, and the sports, uh, programs that, uh, our fields need improving, um, updating, and, and all of that, which, which they would do. This is a, um, I think their business model envisions a, a kind of a 501(c)(3) also, but also there's a private, you know, for-profit entity in this. But their, their goal is really to serve the community, um, and provide all of this. I think it, uh, and the, I think the committee feels that, that this ties into a lot of the things we're trying to do. Uh, you know, try to, to integrate the college more into the community, trying to get the community here to the college to see what goes on, and, and I think a little bit of that has started to kind of happen with the Silver Autos, uh, and that program. And, you know, more details on that, Eric may be able to give us with, people have some questions. The other thing is that obviously the college needs for sports and instruction would take priority. Uh, just like for the Silver Autos, uh, so that wouldn't be affected. A lot of the, the activity happens in, on weekends and at, at times that, you know, the college wouldn't be using the fields for our, our programs. They're now at the point of moving on to their Phase Two. I think they're already out looking for financing. Now it's a question about where are they gonna put this? Um, if it's not here, they're, they've got a couple of other options they're, they're looking at. As far as the specifics about how many fields and what type of fields, they're now getting into what they described as, um, rightsizing the project for whatever, you know, land they're gonna be able to try to put that on. So, that's what they're, they're asking for the district to now engage with them and providing them information, access, you know, to our facilities, so that they can make the determinations as to what really would fit out there, what kind of, uh, physical, uh, improvements, uh, upgrades need to be made just to, you know, the, the land itself to be able to, uh, handle this kind of a complex and, and exactly where things would go, uh, what issues need to be dealt with, like, um, the water, the, uh, flooding and, and other issues we have with some of the, uh, the vacant land out there where some of the sports fields are now. So, um, the committee felt that it was certainly worth, and there could be a lot of value here, not just to, to the district, but to the community and helping us, um, advance our goals about bringing the community here and, um, providing a lot more and being a center, a center of the community, which this is what their, the complex seeks to, to really provide, uh, a central location for the entire community uh, to be able to engage in, in, uh, sports and, and these activities out there. So, it was the recommendation of the committee that, um, the board, direct Dr. Kraft and the administration to start to engage with, uh, with the group, uh, so that they can get the information they need, uh, talk in more detail to the college about college, colleges' needs for sports and the facilities, so they can get this, uh, rightsizing completed, uh, and see if this would work here on our, on our campus.
That was a very thorough summary. It was a good job, trustee Rios. It is an action item, and I have a motion. And then we'll bring Eric up. Do you guys, can we have discussion before?
Yeah, you can, you can make the motion and second, and then talk.
Do I have a? We do a motion and a? To have a motion, my trustee Dodd, do I have a second? Have a second by trustee Baker. And for Eric, if you have, head to the podium, if you don't mind.
My main question is, um, are we essentially saying with this action that we are inviting you guys to come in and determine whether or not this space could work? And then, at that point, we would actually discuss what that would look like? So, we're not, I mean, like, we're taking a lease or, or whatever, you know, is, I mean, we're, I feel like I'm not really a hundred percent understanding, I understand what the point of it is and the goal and what it could look like, but, but the, um, you know, who, who would be in charge of it, that kind of stuff, I don't really understand.
Well, the, the process is, if you remember when we went through this with the Silver Autos,
Right.
Very similar to that.
Okay.
And where, yeah, they, they have to determine if, if what they're envisioning will work,
Right.
how it would fit in. And then all of those other details, just like with the Silver Autos, Dr. Kraft and the administration, gets into that to see how the arrangement with the group would, would work.
There's some, let me, let me go first, Eric, and then, I'm sorry. There's some guiding that would have to happen from my vantage point, which would be, here are the, here are the instructional areas that are affected, health, oc, police academy, fire, PE, athletics, agriculture. So, a lot of people are involved in those spaces. So, that's just kind of heads up, you know? And then there are some, Bob would wanna walk through and say, yeah, this is good, but there's a nuclear, you know, burial ground right here, you know? Or there's, you know, shh, um, there's, there's no infrastructure here, but there is here, or, you know, this is, this is protected habitat, or those kinds of things. So, I can see where staff would be, y- y- you would just be on your own, just guessing where things might be. So, you know, that level of engagement is, I think, what I'm seeing. I'm sorry, Eric, but maybe they.
No, that's, um, I, I will say, if there's a nuclear burial ground, we may, maybe a deal breaker.
Yeah, could be.
Uh, yeah, so, actually, where we're at right now, we, we did a feasibility study, uh, that came back and said the, the quantity of fields approximately. Now, where we're at at the second stage is to say, what we're asking for is staff time to say, like, okay, what would you like? And I know, I'm familiar with the police academy program here, so obviously, while a typical, uh, junior college wouldn't go to, towards the way of like a track and field type option, um, they would say, we still need some kind of running tracks or things that they can do their timing. The, the possibility of using the parking lot areas that they do for the driving course, uh, those are, those are certain parameters that also make, uh, that you'd wanna make sure that they fit into it. So, for us, what we would look at at this point is we'd say, okay, we know that this kind of sizing would work in this type of a community. And then what we would do is come back and say, okay, what kind of actual usable land is there? And then what exactly are the needs? So, for example, where I fit in is, is a, as a member of the community board, or the community side of it, um, is I own the men's semi-professional-going-professional soccer team here. And, uh, we'd love to have a small stadium. Uh, so, the concept is, is in, you know, the Silver Autos are already involved. Uh, the stadium hasn't come to fruition in the way that they'd want to, but getting a, a, a baseball stadium that could do four, five hundred people or however many that's appropriate, and again, this, this sizing would be helping with that. Um, and obviously, we would want the Silver Autos' input and the, the faculty and staff. Uh, and then the soccer side, we would be saying the same, um, that again, all of it would be used for college use first. Um, there are different units that we've seen. Pleasanton has a great complex that's in kind of a neighborhood, but they have probably a ten-k track almost that goes around like fifteen fields, but it just kind of meanders through. There's multiple playground sets, so then people and families can go out and walk and be there. People can just go and, you know, elderly walk and just be out there, elderly forty-four-year-olds like myself walk instead of run. So, those are, those are all options, but we'd want, I mean, we feel like if, um, if a collaboration effort's gonna happen, you don't need us to come in and force what we think should be here. This should be something that you guys look back and go, absolutely, we feel that this is a need as well. So, um, I, I personally, um, so you know, not to get into too much detail, I run Napa United for, for kids, so we have almost two thousand kids. We don't turn any kid down according to financial, uh, reasons. Um, I have the men's professional team, I have grocery stores, I have, you know, lots of different irons in the fire. Um, and so, this is something that I've seen, a lot of my employees that actually are students here, uh, that I'm seeing the junior college become a part of the community that almost seemed like to be its own island. Uh, so, the idea of housing, um, and I have a couple of ideas that I won't waste your time with now, when I was hearing you talk about urban development options. But, uh, I think this is something that would bring, uh, the community here, as well as generate the economy for down the road in terms of helping with tournament-level sports coming in and sportcation. Uh, people that are going to Vegas for a softball tournament, and the husband and wife, or the two partners, or whoever goes, and they go and enjoy the weekend. So, they stay, they eat the food, they, you know? So, these, that's the type, but we wanna make sure it's right-sized, that works for you guys. So, what we're asking in this situation is, uh, the support of staff. Um, we're assuming twenty to forty-ish hours approximately, um, of different people to basically have some meetings, maybe a little bit less, maybe a little bit more, depending, um, to say, what do you want, what do you need? And then we'll, we'll make it work with our renderings in the phase to say, here's what we could do. Because you're in the middle of the housing option, that would also be good to know is, how much housing, sorry, are you planning to build? Because that changes the quantity of land.
And, and you, you only be looking at facilities that would complement things that we are already doing, or really? So, like, we don't have an ice rink. I'd love to have an ice rink in Napa, by the way, but, um, but we don't teach hockey. So, uh, so would, would something, does it, would it only be things that we actually have programs for?
Not necessarily. I mean, um, for, for us, I mean, uh, I was, I was telling Oscar earlier uh, that I was the only white kid in class at Yonville School. By twenty twenty-four, they're saying that fifty-four percent of California will be of Hispanic, some kind of Hispanic origin, right? So, uh, the movement towards more soccer, uh, it's moving away from other sports. Lacrosse is growing, the worry about concussions, things that are happening. Um, we've heard people in Yonville, 'cause I'm on the TOT Committee up there, uh, talk about, oh, we have to have like forty-seven pickleball courts. Pickleball's cool, you can play it on tennis, maybe you work one in, but let's make sure it's the right size. So, ice rink, if that's something of interest, and we feel that it is, that, that's why these meetings happen. Uh, we had somebody at the Real, Real Properties that said that they would wanna track, uh, but I had heard already from other people on staff that they're like, track doesn't make sense financially for those types of things, but maybe it is right for you guys. So, so, I, I think it would all depend on your direction that you would want to give us, and then that would just become Phase Two. And then that would just become phase two. So we would come back and say, kind of, here's the direction and kind of get some, and then if, I would assume that then it starts to get more, like, do we really want to start going down this path in both, in both levels? So, and then yes, one quick thing Raphael too, was he said it would be two parts. We would be a private entity as well as a nonprofit. So the nonprofit would be running the certain programs that would be giving back to the community and doing things of the sort. And then the private side would be how it works. And I understand that a little bit better because the men's team is a for-profit and the nonprofit for Napa United is a nonprofit doing both of those, and it is way easier to run a for-profit than it is to run a nonprofit. In terms of support financially, everybody thinks you're a nonprofit, so, oh, great, here's my money, I'm going to get nothing for this. So we could, but those all kind of work out in the play, the way it goes, so.
Trustee Goff?
Yeah, I have several questions. One is North Bay Sports Complex. So have you built these before?
So me personally, no. I build, I have Ranch Market, so that's about as big as I've gotten. Andy Eleopolis, who was the one that presented last time, has a group of four individuals from here that are born and raised in Napa, and they are the ones that have done it. We are in partnership with a company called SFA, who has built, I believe, and I, don't quote me on this, like $8 billion in these complexes around the country, Bo Jackson's Sports Complex and some others. So they're very familiar with how to do it. So they did the first version of the, the first phase and came back with us and said, yes, this could work. And very, very blunt, the reason why it's called North Bay Sports Complex is because if Napa doesn't find the spot for it, we don't want to call it Napa Sports Complex because it may end up in Sonoma or...
The name of the complex that you're going to...
Mary Island. I'm sorry?
That's the name of the, of the complex. That's not the name of the group.
It's, uh, it's, it's the name of the group with the intent to build it somewhere in the North Bay.
Oh, gotcha.
Our, we, our first priority was Napa and is Napa, but there's, you know, there's so much going on at Mary Island, Sonoma, Fairfield, all the, a lot of other areas were like, we'll take it.
Yes, absolutely.
But...
Now, I was happy Raphael said that NBC Athletics would have priority, correct?
Yes.
Of the com... I'm just unsure of the relationship. Would your group take on the maintenance and operations of it? Would that fall as an expense on the college? Do you have any, have you gotten to that point where you're talking about how it would actually be set up as far as maintaining and, and operating a complex?
So similarly to, it was funny when, when Dr. Kraft was presenting, because I'm hearing the same kind of conversations going on, and that's why the concept of private partnership or, or nonprofit or things of the sort. And I think there's plenty of ways to go about it. I can't say exactly how that would be because right now I think they'd say first, let's look at the, the concept. And then at that point, we would say, okay, here's options. We'll either build it and then you guys can figure out a way to make it happen. I know that the, the complex is, is well above $50 million to build something of this size. So a lot of times they look at that number and go, oh my gosh, this is, how do you make it work? Our intent would be, from what I understand primarily, to say, we'd like to build it, we'd like to basically come to an agreement ahead of time and say, here's the expectations of you guys in terms of your soccer programs. Both of your coaches coach for my club, by the way. Your, your, all the programs that you have to make sure the college has first access to it. And then obviously things into the community, the Race for Education 10K that we've run on that great track, and I've had an asthma attack from all the dust, and things of the sort. So you, we would look at all those things first and, and then all the management and planning would happen within that as well, based on the right sizing of it.
Okay. And when you, when you talk about P3, does that mean that the college eventually pays back and, and ultimately owns the, the complex?
I think what I'm hearing is there's, there's a plethora of options here. One could indeed be the kind of P3 that's, this could be constructed as a, just like housing P3.
Right.
There's even a muni bond possibility here for this one, depending on how you could monetize it. But, or many other variations.
Okay, so we're just at the, let's see if it's, if it's reasonable and then we'll figure out, and everybody's okay with that? I'm just asking, is that, okay?
I mean, I think the way that I, so, you can correct me at any time, please. You get, North Bay Sports Complex have done an economic kind of feasibility, like understand market demand and hey, there's a market demand, okay. But now what we're doing by this decision is we are effectively opening up our books, letting them access to the property to, let's say, survey it, to see environmental constraints. Because ultimately, this group can't come with any sort of proposals in terms of economics and, and money and whatnot, because they don't know how much it's going to cost to build.
Gotcha.
And so that's why, I mean, I think this is really, this is pretty much a no risk situation for the college, just giving an opportunity to have a conversation and say, yes, we're interested, because ultimately if it does, if it does pencil out, I think it's just a win-win-win. Win for community, win for kids and win for the college. I mean, recall the baseball team didn't even get on the field from December to, I think, March, so four months, they didn't even have one practice on their, on their field. So, I mean, ultimately if it pays out, that's, that's fantastic. And if it doesn't, then I think it, everyone's, you know, saved, it was very, very little invested in it.
Okay.
To, to give you an idea, I believe in Stockton, there's a lot of fields where they literally are built below a berm. So they literally to, to allow the airflow where that they can get out there. So actually it's great for soccer, ball gets kicked out of bounds and it rolls back to you. But I, we've thrown out that idea because it's easy to turn and say, oh, we'll bring in X amount of yards and raise it all up, and then now the baseball field will be able to play year round, except then that's going to flood some, if that water doesn't come here, it's going to go somewhere else. So we're going to have to look at options of possibly having, you know, parts of it elevated, so then it's usable year round, and then other parts that would be overflow to basically protect the rest of it, parts that are synthetic, parts that are not. I would say pretty strongly, but again, I think the next phase would be more important to get done before decided. It wouldn't make sense, and I'm not the one putting out the money to do it, but it wouldn't make sense for them to come up with 60 whatever million and go, okay, when it's done, here you go, it's back. My assumption would be is they would include where the land would be part of it, and then each year, part of the revenue would be back to the college. So it'd be a revenue source for you, especially, you know, understanding that the, the way that the state's funding community colleges down the road, you have to find new funding sources, right? So this would be something is now it's a partnership that we don't have to, and the original idea was also that we would take care of the maintenance and everything, because that would be us. Otherwise, if the maintenance isn't a certain level, it's hard to say, well, we're not getting as many tournaments because it's, so we'd, we'd take it over and then we would do, I would assume some sort of a rev share, again, having to get agreed to a point.
I'm, I'm glad you reminded me that you do have a vested interest with your teams.
Yeah.
You want it at a certain level, and that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Well, I know that this has been a topic of the board of, of the athletic field, so it, it sounds like a good idea to invest, to investigate.
Entertain.
Yeah.
Yeah. So any other questions? So call the question, all those in favor? We had a motion by trustee Dodd and a second by trustee Baker. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion is unanimous. So let's see if it works out.
Good.
Great.
All right. Thank you, thank you Eric.
And thanks to Raphael too, for putting together a nice little overview.
Great presentation.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Well done. So next we have our board policy review and adoption. This is 16.1, these are second reading board policies. BP 2100, 3560, 4021, 7120 and 7130.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Rios and a second by trustee Dodd. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimous, thank you. Next we are on to board reports, standing committee and other appointment reports. Let's start with district auxiliary. I, we did meet, I did not make that meeting, I was up in Tahoe. It was a good meeting. We do have, I think two more came out and calendared.
Yes, yes, I think we're, we're calendared. Yeah, that meeting we adopted, I believe we adopted the, the budget, Bob.
Yes, we adopted the budget and set the calendar up for the rest of the year through June 30th of 2020.
Thank you. BWT.
Scheduled to meet on the 27th of next month.
Thank you. Legislative Affairs Committee, a lot of stuff happening there.
Do I have a tentative date? Are we going to keep that tentative date?
Does that, I forget, what did we have?
I don't know. Let me, let me show you.
Do you have anything Holly? Is Holly still here?
Nothing to...
For the legislative...
I had a, yeah, I had a tentative committee meeting date on the 29th. Yeah.
I mean, I could do that, but...
If we don't have anything to discuss, I just wanted to know if it was still on there? No? No?
Let's circle back and see where we're at and what bills are in motion and correlate with that.
And maybe we'll have it? So I'll leave it on my calendar.
The final stages, bills are coming out of committee and they'll be moved to the governor's desk for signature.
Right, so there's not much we would...
Right, right.
I know Senator Dodd has a food bill or for food that's going to Newsom's desk.
What we've got to do is go over that to his security.
So we'll get back with the date for that. So audit and finance, that was last month, right?
Yes, we'll, we'll need to meet in early September for the final budget.
Thank you. Rural property, we had the report from trustee Rios.
Just had the report and there's nothing else before the committee at this time.
Thank you. McPherson, that's done. All right, trustee and board chair reports. Trustee Pablo Leon.
Yeah, so for the past month, I've just been working a little bit more with my ASNVC members, just kind of establishing, we've had our first meeting. We were looking to have a variety of committees filled with students on those boards, and we're in the planning stages for the beginning of the school year. So we're getting involved with the welcome back tables that we assist in, as well as a spirit week in the month of August. We've also, or I've, I will be attending the Napa County Chamber of Commerce, the award ceremony, and that's going to be tomorrow, so I'll be there. And I'll be absent at the regular meeting of next month. So I'll be in attendance for the special, but I will be out of the country for that regular meeting.
Hopefully I'll be able to catch one of the forums though.
Oh yeah, most definitely, yeah.
All right, trustee Baker.
I went to the police academy graduation, it was great, and other than that, been catching up on some sleep.
Trustee Dodd?
Nothing to report.
Trustee Rios?
No report.
Trustee Goff?
Well, I don't know what you guys been up to, but I've been really busy. So I don't know what that's about. I've attended a lot of community meetings this month, for some reason, it just kind of happened. The signage is up at the high school and people are starting to notice and they're very, very excited about that. I was at a graduation party for a former student who graduated from college and mentioned the classes that were going to be offered, and they were just over the moon. They were so excited that that was happening, that it was moving forward, that potentially we'd have college class during the day. So they're very excited. The community overwhelmingly is really thrilled with what's happening and looking forward to us moving forward with that. And they love the signage. I did go to the police academy graduation with all of you, and that was just amazing. Amazing, amazing experience, and I look forward to attending more in the future. Very proud of our students, really nice.
If I could ask a question, Holly, do you, do you know when the ribbon cutting is?
August 29th at 2 o'clock.
Okay. So American Canyon, August 29th, we're doing at 3 o'clock you said, I'm sorry? 2 o'clock?
You know, it's real helpful if you send out a calendar invitation.
We will.
What day of the week is that?
We just nailed it down, you know, so...
August 29th is a, is a Thursday, and we're in school.
Yes.
At 2 o'clock. So are we going to do ribbon cutting when we're in school?
Absolutely.
For classes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you know, the, if I can, I don't hate to, well, the, the thought process with your superintendent and ours is that this is primarily, we already have the soft opening of this, so this is an opportunity for, you know, the official piece. And maybe there could be some students who might want to attend, but we didn't see it as a disruptive thing for school. So, you know, it, because it'll be external, so that was the main thing.
Call of duty photo op.
Okay. Just be ready for my freshmen.
So you'll have to get out of class, yes, yeah. Bring your class, yeah, that's good.
Okay, I'm just warning you.
Yeah, okay.
I have freshmen at that time, so it'll be interesting. Okay. I'll put it on my calendar, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Speaking of dates, Dr. Kraft, I'm going to be gone for the September board meeting. Just to, not to...
That's not acceptable.
Really, I'm, I'm sorry, this is a...
September, you're out, okay.
I'm out of the meeting.
Are you going to Italy?
Alert you guys, what's that?
Are you going to Italy?
What's that? No, 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 somewhere less fun, okay?
Okay, Catherine's got that. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Segura?
I also attended the police academy graduation with everybody, we missed you.
Sorry.
And the parade was great, it was, it was awesome. And I agree with you, it's growing, I mean, two streets and, and looking forward to the gala tomorrow, the, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce gala. And looking forward to, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow night, yes.
Who else is going to that? All right. Great meeting you guys and thank you Eric for coming in and answering some questions.
Thank you for a great presentation.
I'm not done, this is my board report. Goodness, gosh. I do, I have it. It's on the list.
Good.
Well, I'm just going to cut my report short, then I've already, so I do want to close this meeting and I'm, we have our special meeting for August 22nd.
What, what hours did we set that for?
Oh, our future agenda items. We haven't, do we have any future agenda item request? 17.3.
I don't know if it's a request or not, but mostly this was curious if, with the closing of the Yountville pool, and there's just like no swimming pools in Napa anymore, and just wondering if we've ever discussed the possibility of opening up the college pool to be available to the public.
It was in the past.
We have, and we have had it open to the public in the past. Let me think about this. Well, it's certainly something we can, we can address. It's facility usage and maybe that the coordination with Park and Rec, we've done that as well. So we could certainly talk about it.
Since we're down another pool.
Yeah, I didn't know that, wow.
Yeah, and it doesn't look like they're going to reopen, so.
Did you have...
I was just going to mention, I wonder what the utilization study's going to say about the pool.
It would, it should talk about it, right? Yeah.